Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting for the Havreford Township Board of Commissioners. Today is Monday, September 11th, 2023. Earlier this evening, our board met in executive session to discuss issues related to personnel, litigation, and real estate. Mr. Berman, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik?
Present.
Commissioner Forstie Grub?
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Here.
Commissioner Cavender?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Wexler?
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes? Here. Before we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I just wanted to note, commemorate, 22 years ago today was a terrible day in American history. But I wanted to read a quote from a gentleman named Jeff Parnas, the founder of New York Says Thank You. Mr. Parnas said, "When Americans lend a hand to one another, nothing is impossible. We're not about what happened on 9/11. We're about what happened on 9/12." I want us to think about that. If everybody would, I want everybody to join us in a moment of silence for all the people who lost their lives on 9/11 and on the days, weeks, months, years after. Chief. Thank you all. Our first item on the agenda, I will ask, the first item on the agenda for us to consider is the appointment of entry-level police officers to the Havreford Township Police Department. I will ask Kathy Dawson, is Kathy here? As the Chair of our Civil Service Commission to come forward and start the process. I'm sorry?
Oops, is this on?
Yes, it is.
I'm only the lowly administrator, not the chairperson.
I choke on hearing the word "lowly," and welcome back and thank you for your assistance.
She's the glue that holds it all together when you say that.
Indeed.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Civil Service Commission began the process of recruiting entry-level police officers in January of this year. Despite the many challenges that a number of police departments face in the country today, not just in this area, but in the country in general, in attracting candidates to apply for these positions, we're very pleased with the applicants who were able to get through our hiring process. And we have a solid list of candidates who are eligible to be hired by the Havreford Township Police Department. We are right now requesting that this board formally approve the list, which you have a copy of.
I move that we approve the list.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the list that has been provided to us by the Civil Service Commission. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I think this might be something we can do by voice acclamation, is that correct? Mr. Berman?
I believe that's correct.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Gondik?
No, it's got to be you. Do all in favor?
Oh, I thought you would do that.
Well, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hearing none, the list is accepted?
Thank you. So, on behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'm here and delighted to come before this body to request the appointment of two entry-level police officers. We want to present the following candidates for your consideration and approval to be hired as entry-level police officers. Brittany Cologne, Mark Monticello, and Mason Etier. And Mr. Etier is entitled to military preference pursuant to federal law.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I motion to appoint Mason Etier as a Havreford Township police officer.
And I'll second.
Any other motions to appoint? Anybody move to close this process?
Motion to close nominations for that position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, before us is the motion to appoint Mason Etier as an entry-level police officer for Havreford Township. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. I'll do both at the end. I'll entertain another motion. I'm sorry, Ms. Dawson.
I gotta go. So, for this second entry-level position, I'd like to present the following candidates: Brittany Cologne, Mark Monticello, and Ginger Dunbar.
I motion to appoint Brittany Cologne as a Havreford Township police officer.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second, all in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondik?
Yes.
Commissioner Forstie Grub?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Officer Cologne.
On behalf of the Civil Service Commission, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners. We are always pleased to provide the service to both the board as well as the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could add, Commissioners, before I gave a little bio on each of them, this process started back in March. It's a very intensive work that we do with the Civil Service. As you know, they're volunteers, and it takes a lot of time and a lot of thought to go into this. So, we thank them very much for what they do, and we've continued to hire the best of the best for Havreford Township. So, if I may, Mason. Mason was born, raised, and raised in Bucks County. He also received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Temple University. He served as a patrol officer with the Philadelphia Police Department since 2018. Since 2016, Mason has been enlisted in Navy Reserves and has been deployed on several overseas missions. Mason's received several military awards, including the Naval Navy Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, and earned Resolve Campaign Medal and the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal. He's here with his mom, Kelly, and his fiancee, Daniella. Brittany. Brittany was born and raised in Scranton, Pennsylvania. She received her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Scranton in 2018. Brittany has served as a patrol officer in the Philadelphia Police Department since 2019. In 2021, Brittany received the Danny Faulkner Award, which is awarded recognizing outstanding police work in an incident. The incident was Brittany's actions in assisting in identifying two homicide suspects. She was also awarded Accommodation for Excellence and the Officer of the Year Award. She's here with her fiancee, Yumar. So, tomorrow, 12:30, they get sworn in and they start their career at Havreford Township. Commissioners, as usual, thank you for your continued support.
And thank you. Welcome to the township. If you guys want to take, you guys want to take any photographs in here or do you want to go out there? Sure, happy to.
Next on our agenda, in order to commemorate National Recovery Month, we are issuing a proclamation, which will do exactly that. So, a call to the front, our, what was the name of her? Our Community Welfare Committee will be presenting this proclamation. And for the benefit of the listening public, that would be Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Trombetta, Commissioner Gondik, and Commissioner McCluskey. And joining at the podium is Peggy Mur, who is the Director of HavreTown Alliance for Drug Awareness.
Thank you so much. It's my privilege to introduce this proclamation. Whereas substance use disorders affect individuals, families, and communities across our nation, and whereas the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration reported that 46.3 million people aged 12 or older, or about 16.5% of the population, met the applicable criteria for having a substance use disorder in the year 2020. And whereas federal data shows the number of drug overdose deaths continue to rise with nearly 110,000 deaths resulting from drug overdose in 2022. And whereas a recent KFF poll found that nearly 1 in 10 adults in the United States have lost a family member to drug overdose, and 2/3 of adults reported having a family member who have been addicted to alcohol or drugs. And whereas the Havreford Township Police Department reports indicate that there have been 50 medical emergencies that were listed as opioid, opiate, forgive me, overdoses since 2021, and more than half of those incidents required the use of Narcan. And whereas recovery from substance use disorders is not only possible, but also an essential aspect of rebuilding lives, restoring families, and revitalizing communities. And whereas the journey of recovery is one that requires strength, courage, and resilience as individuals work to overcome obstacles. And whereas the collective efforts of healthcare professionals, advocates, support networks, and community organizations play a crucial role in offering guidance, resources, and opportunities for those in need of recovery. And whereas, first recognized in 1989, Recovery Month is a national observance led by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration every September to raise awareness about the importance of prevention, treatment, and recovery services, and to celebrate the successes of those who have embarked on the path of recovery. And whereas, during this month, we celebrate individuals living lives in recovery, honoring the dedication of individuals in recovery, and acknowledge the role of families in supporting their loved ones. And whereas, in the month of September, we recognize the dedicated workers who provide essential prevention, treatment, and recovery support services that help make recovery possible. And whereas, by coming together as a community to support recovery, we demonstrate our commitment to creating a society that promotes compassion, understanding, and a sense of belonging for all of its members. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners in the Township of Havreford and Delaware County do hereby proclaim September as Recovery Month, and be it further resolved that we call upon our governmental entities, community organizations, healthcare providers, and citizens to join in the national effort to raise awareness, provide resources, and foster an environment of acceptance and support for individuals and families on the path to recovery, path to and in recovery, proclaim this 11th day of September 2023. Thank you so much. I'd now like to invite Peggy Mur from the Havreford Alliance for Drug Awareness to say a few words.
Yeah, turn it around. Oh, you want to trust you? Sure, if I knew how to do that.
Twist?
There's something down there.
I wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners, and now that I'm in front of you, I wanted to just go right down the line here. Bill Wexler, when we first started this group, because of his EMS experience, he came up to me and he said, "Anything you need, let me help you." Commissioner Hart, of course, is a physician, and he said the same thing. Commissioner Connor Quinn, he's on our HADA, he was part of our HADA group for many years. Dave Berman, we'll get to you later, we have a special, I'm sorry, I don't know you. Larry Holmes was a guest bartender, and he donated money to HADA a few years ago. Judy is my own Commissioner, who I'd love that she did this. Laura, both Laura and Sherri have stopped at our tables, and they said anything you could do, and Brian too. Brian's here where Steve D'Amelio used to sit, and Steve was very active in HADA. I remember one night we had a fundraiser, and he was out directing cars in the rain for us. And I leave Commissioner McCluskey last, because we've been existence for seven and a half years now, and we put something in the community network Facebook site. We thought we were going to get about 15 people, and 100 people showed up at the library. That's how many people were affected by drugs in their family or by family members. And Kevin came up to me, and I never met the man before, and he said, "Listen, I'm running for Commissioner, but if I win or lose, I still want to be involved." And I'll never forget that evening. Kevin and I met quite a few times because he worked around the corner for me, so I wanted to thank him. A few of our core members are not here. Jessica Brash, Jennifer Tuft, who is now a clinical, she's getting her PhD, and she's working in this field, we love seeing that. And Lisi Acquavelli, who just retired from the high school, she was a health teacher. But beside that, I also wanted to thank our wonderful police over here. They have been nothing but supportive. We had a vigil the very first year we were in existence, and they went out and they had extra patrolmen. And Jim McCanns, he's our lifeblood. He gives us so much information. We really are lucky in this community, because I worked along the side of it, I won't say the name of the other town, but it's in Delco. And they started a similar group about a year after Havreford did. And they flat-out told us that they didn't want them to have that group because they were worried. They didn't want the people to know about the stigma, and they thought it would reduce real estate prices. I was like, mind-boggling. That was never the case here. We wanted to get it out in the open, and everyone here has been so supportive. So, thank you so much. I just wanted you also to know that the people here have been instrumental. Sharon White, who's here, she actually works with the county task force, she's going to talk a little bit about the county. And Pastor Tim, he worked with us, we had a few churches, and he was always our chaplain for any HADA groups. And John Orns will talk to you, he's one of the parents. But back when we started, we did a lot of community events. Our mission really was to de-stigmatize the opioid addiction. Addiction, we always believed, was a disease, and it was our goal to get out there and, hey, let's talk about it. We met with Dr. Maureen Roushi of the school board, we had meetings at the high school, the school board let us, or actually, Dr. Roushi let us put tables up at back the school night. You can't believe how many people walked by with a thumbs up. Some of them were a little embarrassed to stop by, but as years went by, they did. We had a 300-person event at St. Dennis. Commissioner Quinn's father spoke. We, like, we were just blown away. And back then, when we first started, nobody knew about this darn stuff. If you watch Dopesick or Painkillers, you want to throw something at the TV. We lost so many kids, they were good kids, I'm starting to get a little emotional, but they were athletes, the doctors prescribed the opioids, and they got hooked. We lost so many kids. The first two years we were in existence, we were going to funerals, one a month. But now it's gotten a little better. There's still some dangers out there that some of these folks will talk about, but I just wanted you to know that the new epidemic now, and you should probably know about this, and we heard this from a clinician at the library, we did a partnering group with them, and he said, "The myth of marijuana, don't think for one second that it's your," I'm not looking at anyone, "it's not your father's marijuana, I'm not making eye contact, but the THC is so addictive." And one of our members, Harold and I, we go to a pool, and everyone our age, they're popping CBD gummies to go to sleep at night. Those things are not regulated, nobody knows what's happening, so beware of that. And Jim probably can tell you this, there's a, THC is in, it's called Delta-8, you can buy it over the counter, and this stuff, so I hear, is very dangerous, so look out for that. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys again, and let these other people get up here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You know I'm hip, so I'm going to do that. John, let me announce first that it's Citizens Forum, and you happen to be first on the list. So, the next item on our agenda is the Citizens Forum with registered speakers. Our first registered speaker is John Orns. Mr. Orns?
Good afternoon, my name's John Orns. My current address is 2200 Arch Street in Philadelphia, but the reason I am here, I lived and raised my children in Havertown Westgate Hills from 1988 to 2009. Good evening, everybody. How are you? Introduction, who I am. I raised two children. I lost my son Daniel to drug addiction in about 2006, and lost him forever when he passed away in 2016 of an overdose. If you go through something like I did as a parent, you become very civic-minded, and I started reaching out and tried to join whatever associations I could. I was turned on to HADA, which was relatively young at the time, this would be in the fall of 2016. And I just started embellishing myself with HADA, coming back to the roots of where I raised my children and my son. That candlelight vigil that Peggy had talked about was very touching. It was in December of 2017, there was candles, and I remember leaning over to Peggy and I said, "We should have our own memorial, that would be really cool." Long story short, it took about two and a half years, we formed a committee, we found a sculpture piece that we thought would be appropriate, and with the assistance of some funding, and with, in addition to the fundraiser that we had, supportive entities like Adam Mechanical and Secret Sauce, Mr. Quinn had mentioned, was mentioned earlier, we were able to purchase a sculpture. It was actually stored here in the facility in, at a giant crate, kind of reminded me of Raiders of the Lost Ark. And I remember Dave and I trying to pull it out, it was so heavy, it was all bolted, it took us 20 minutes. Finally, my other son had to reach in there and pull it out with a little bit of muscle. We had a unveiling at the Kelly Center, which is a very touching event, the whole place was pretty well-packed. And then we had it installed in the, it was in August of 2020 at the height of pandemic. In fact, if you look at the brochure that was put together, you could see us with the shovels, with the masks on, and it was outside. This was August of 2020, pre-vaccine, or whatever. I'm in that picture, Peggy, a couple of the people I don't recognize. Lisa Acquavelli, who used to work at the school, is also involved, Peggy did not mention, she also lost her son a couple of years ago. So, we are what we call vilenmas, parents that have lost their children. It was installed at the split of Darby Road, where it splits to go to Eagle Road. This is the program that we had put together, and even though the unveiling there was somewhat compromised by the pandemic, it was a beautiful day, and it was still a good 50, 50 people, I guess, like that, probably would have been tripled that had not been for the pandemic. What this means to us at HADA and the parents is, what it represents is the innocence of our children being born into this wonderful township, as far as I'm concerned, I have nothing but fond memories here. And little boy, little girl sitting on a stoop, and the birds do represent their spirits, and the one child holding up that bird, ready to send them off to the sky, it does mean a lot to us. It's also a place for solace for us that have lost, to be able to just go out there and sit on the bench and make a connection. We look for connections if you lose a child like I have, and this is a place of connection for us. But equally as important, we want this to be known and represented to all the residents of this township, the parents and the children, why this is here, what it means, what it represents, the awareness that we're trying to bring, and to hope that these kids would not be associated with this memorial, which is what it is. Do want to thank everybody that was helpful, Kevin was helpful, I don't know a lot of you on here, but Kevin was helpful, and also that even though the pandemic took a lot of steam out of this epidemic, has not gone away, and it's getting worse, as we're all aware. In closing, I just wanted to say that I for one, and HADA as a whole, we deeply appreciate this proclamation.
Next on my list is Pastor Tim Johansson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pastor Tim Johansson, I live at 511 Brookline Boulevard, I'm the pastor of Temple Lutheran Church, and I've been serving there for the last 11 years. Also been on HADA pretty much since its foundation. We've lost parishioners to overdoses and to the disease of drug addiction. One thing that wasn't mentioned as far as developments in this epidemic is the rise of fentanyl. Fentanyl is a prescription drug that is used as a painkiller, and when mixed with many of these drugs is terribly deadly. Many dealers will put fentanyl in their drugs because, A, it's cheap, B, it gives people an even greater high, and C, when one is in the midst of addiction, if they hear that something is so good it killed a guy, they want it. So, it makes their product more attractive as well. Nowadays, many street drugs are being laced with fentanyl, whether it's marijuana cartridges, or really anything, it's not just heroin. And so, that's making this landscape really, really dangerous. But I digress, I'm here to tell you about one of the initiatives in the Havreford Alliance for Drug Awareness, the scholarship fund that we established two years ago for graduating seniors who are from any high school who are residents of Havreford Township. And it's a $500 scholarship for those whose lives have been affected by addiction. And they submit an essay, and I am on a small committee that has the honor of reading these essays and hearing their stories. The young people of this township are absolutely amazing and resilient, reading 15 to 20 dreadful stories, because the disease of substance use disorder affects families, and it has affected many of our children. And yet, they propel themselves forward, looking to make something of themselves and turn their lives around and overcome many odds. And so, the last two years, we've awarded that scholarship, and we have every intention of keeping that going. Unfortunately, much of that money that we saw in addition to businesses and citizens who are all wonderful, well-intentioned people, also who are all wonderful, well-intentioned people, also in the event of an overdose death, many in their obituaries say, in lieu of flowers, donation can be made to the Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness. And so we find that we receive many donations that way. And so to know that these gifts given in honor and in memory of those who have passed on from this illness are able to bless others is, it's truly beautiful in a really sad kind of way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Sharon White.
Recovery is a message of hope and the promise of freedom. Hello, I'm Sharon White. I'm a longtime resident of Lansdowne, business owner, community activist, and very grateful to be here with you tonight. I have a business, Grip Dynamics LLC Consulting for Recovery and Substance Use Disorders and Mental Health Issues. I sit on a few, several boards, one being the Delaware County Drug and Alcohol Council Planning, as well as the OCAM, which is Opiate Crisis Action Network with Larry Arda and his team. I also am a community advisor for Amerike, which is, they serve several thousand people, community members for mental health and substance use disorders. Actually, as I was listening to the folks that spoke before me, I was thinking the last time I was at a recovery proclamation, which I'm thankful, was with my son in 2018. He's no longer with us. So that was pretty powerful. Peggy Mur, that was from the Delaware County Council when we were at in 2018. Peggy Mur with Hatta, who has done great work, as you know, in our community, has invited me here tonight to join you in celebrating this very important occasion, the proclamation of recovery and its miracles. Delaware County has taken enormous strides to reform how it thinks about this crisis, addressing this public health in recent years. Addiction is a public health crisis. It's an epidemic, and delivering necessary care and services is absolutely urgent. We have come a long way, however, there is still a great deal of work to be accomplished to save lives. Delaware County is being progressive in providing services and resources for individuals in recovery, for example, harm reduction initiatives, warm handoff services, meeting people where they're at, medical assistance treatment, robust Narcan distribution, and evidence-based wraparound services that include family and community. In September 2022, Council Chair Dr. Monica Taylor announced that Delaware County will receive $63 million in 18 annual payments, so they'll be paid out annually each year. Recently, $6 million was distributed for the first amount of monies. There'll be another one in October. People are, we're really encouraging people to submit proposals on how they best feel as though these funds should be spent. County residents and their loved ones. I just want to read a couple of things, the core strategies that will guide the allowance of the funds, the allocation of the funds from the website. There's a few of them, and expand support of Narcan and medication assistance treatment is one. God bless you. Treatment screening for pregnant, postpartum women and neonatal absence syndrome babies. Warm handoffs. Treatment for the incarcerated population. Syringe service programs, data collection and research. We really need to know where we are before we can move forward, so real-time data is really critical. Funds will be also for wraparound services, the support of drug courts and diversion programs, and support, of course, for our first responders who have done an incredible job, exceptional job for all of us in our community. Addiction, like other diseases, chronic, cancer, diabetes, families and community are the cornerstone of healing and essential in the recovery process. Recovery is not a one-size-fits-all model. Recovery is a sacred journey that is filled with goals, dreams and hopes, and requires some of the most complex and rewarding work a person can experience. People in recovery are some of the most resilient, grateful and humble folks I have had the pleasure to spend time with, and I believe that we should be supportive and celebrate their lives. And I thank you again for having me tonight. I appreciate all the work that you're providing for our communities.
Next person on the registered speaker list is Brian McKinney.
My name is Brian McKinney. I'm a resident of the 5th Ward. I live at 703 Polo Circle, right down the road from the Polo Field. I'd like to speak today on the plans to formalize Lower Marion School to trick use of Polo Field. Specifically, I would like to express my concerns about the proposed options for dropping Lower Marion students off on Railroad Avenue and how that would impact residents in my area. The character of the formalized agreement being considered would have material effects on the areas surrounding the field, and these effects would impact the safety of all parties involved, cause environmental degradation, and increase congestion in an already congested area. This change in character would result directly from the use of buses to transport students to and from the field. As residents of Polo Road and Polo Circle, my neighbors, I understand that there are three options for accomplishing these drop-offs. One, letting students pull off on Railroad Avenue without a bus pull-off, excuse me, creating a bus pull-off by destruction of shade trees that line the perimeter of the field, and using the existing parking lot that is on the field. My neighbor Lynn Elliott spoke at the August 14th board meeting regarding the prospect of cutting down the trees to create a bus pull-off, and I'll allow her comments to speak for me as well. As reflected in my August 24th email to the members of this board, my main concerns relate to the safety implication of using Railroad Avenue as a drop-off point for the Lower Marion students. Doing so will add another complicating element to onto an already precarious stretch of road. Railroad Avenue is often used as an alternate route when there is construction or delays on Haverford or Lancaster. The road bottlenecks at various points due to parking, particularly between Rugby Road and Polo Road, and it chooses a point of ingress and egress for employees of local businesses. Add to this the fact that there are significant existing problems relating to non-adherence to stop signs, as well as to the speed limit, and you have an unfortunate mix that's ripe for accidents involving pedestrians and vehicles alike. I'd like to also add that this area is often used by emergency vehicles to respond to situations at the care facilities nearby. Any measures that will increase congestion will also increase the time it takes for residents to receive life-saving care in the event of an emergency. With these considerations in mind, I hope that you understand this should make the use of Railroad Avenue in any form an unacceptable option. While it may not be the preferred solution for all parties involved, using the existing parking lot on the field would be the most logical in terms of safety and least disruptive to the surrounding areas. I understand that there's pressure to get this agreement signed, but the bottom line is that this moment calls for a little bit of a delay until these issues are resolved. Let's take the pressure off until residents' concerns can be studied, understood, properly considered and addressed. Additionally, I believe, I speak for all neighbors, when I say as a taxpaying resident of Haverford Township, we deserve to have the opportunity to review a final draft of the agreements months and not days or weeks in advance. Thank you very much.
The next registered speaker is Joseph Dunlop.
Hi, I'm Joseph Dunlop. I live at 760 Buck Lane. Been a Haverford resident for quite a time. I know we dealing with a sign that was on Lancaster Avenue, Lower Marion School, child bullies. Lady at 701 is about to open up that store, because if you let this store that's going to open up at the gas station that's going to expand, that open up the opportunities for that woman to open up that opportunity in that store, that corner. So what do you think about what's going to benefit that store for us? What's the beneficiary? What is it going to benefit? You got a problem with the drug problem after the Corona and the Delta, you go to that store, that's all in there, in gummies. So why should I want that in my neighborhood? It's a traffic problem as it is. We've been talking about this traffic problem before any of this other stuff came around, and we haven't solved the traffic problem, have we, chief? No, we haven't. Still a problem with that traffic. And all we keep saying is, oh, we can do this, we can do that. What about the traffic first? What about the people that live in that township from Millbrook to Railroad to, excuse me, to Polo Field? We have to deal with that. We walk our dogs. We have one part that we can walk our dogs, and that's in Preston. And we have traffic problems. Yesterday, I had to call the police to have somebody's car ticketed, because I can't get out my driveway, because the people that use the soccer field decide we could park where we want to, and park their car from my driveway where I can't get my car out. So we talking about a store, what about the traffic problem first? We solve the traffic problem, then you open your store and do whatever you want to do. But my concern is my neighbors. You don't live in over there where we live at. Y'all don't live over here on this side. You don't live over there. You don't come get gas from over there. That gas isn't as dangerous. I just watched, almost watched an accident before I came here. Person wants to turn right back into Haverford. A person wants to go out to Buck Lane, to make the left, to go through that light. Guess what they almost did? They almost had a head-on collision. But it's okay for that store to expand. And that store expanding, the store across streets will open up too. And we're going to have a major traffic problem. Ain't nobody here wants to have anybody kid get killed because of some damn drunk driver or somebody. Have you ever come around that curve on Haverford? Huh? No, you haven't, probably. That Haven turn is dangerous. There's nowhere to walk on Haverford. But we worried about opening up a damn store. What about making this traffic safe for our, by the neighborhood? Then we worry about the store. Then we worry about Lower Marion High School. Then we worry about everything else. What about the people that live in the neighborhood first? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. Also, next on my list of registered speakers is Doreen Sar.
Hi, everyone. I'm Inayra Jones. I live at 748 Rugby Road, and I'm really going to be talking about the same issue. I would request that the Board of Commissioners authorize its solicitor to review the decision of the zoning hearing board to grant five variances to the owners of the Phillips 66 gas station. It's on a dangerous corner, as Joe pointed out. The site is zone C2, even though it's half the size required for a gas station, because the gas station was grandfathered. Under the ordinance, a second commercial use in an area zone C2 is not permitted. The gas station abuts residential housing. When the tenant of the repair shop terminated, the owner sought variances to continue the use of a gas station and open a convenience store with skill games. The owner claimed that without a convenience store, the station would be less profitable. Now, although the zoning hearing board didn't make any findings or facts or give any its decision, it appears that that was the basis on which the owner received five variances. There are many problems with this decision. First, the applicant did not meet the requirements for the variance set out under state law, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, and the Haverford Township Ordinance 1821004, which sets out the standards for determinations on variances. There was no testimony submitted of that. In sum, for a variance, the applicant must show hardship due to the unique physical conditions of the property. The applicant merely, and that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public interest. The applicant argued for a variance because a convenience store would make the operation more profitable. In Oxford Corporation versus the zoning hearing board of the borough of Oxford, the Commonwealth Court held, a variance will not be granted simply because a zoning ordinance deprives the owner of the most lucrative or profitable use for the property. I won't go through the five, but there is no unique physical conditions, and there was no testimony submitted. The property can be used in conformity with the existing zoning. The gas station can continue to operate. Three and four, three is not so relevant. Four, that the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare. In fact, as we all know, this is an incredibly dangerous stretch of Haverford Road. The applicant did not present a traffic study, testimony by a traffic engineer, any data as to the volume of traffic generated to private convenience store, or any testimony to rebut the testimony of numerous neighbors who testified to the dangerous conditions at the site. And five, the variance represents the least possible modification of the regulation. In fact, there are so many variances that were granted in this that there is an extreme modification of the site. Second, the current zoning only allows one use to occupy the property. Allowing two uses sets a dangerous precedent, both for the current site and for review of future applicants. In effect, the property has been rezoned C4 Highway Commercial. Three, the applicant didn't meet the requirements of Haverford statutes, which require 32,000 feet for a gas station and 7,500 feet for convenience stores. Both uses are shoehorned into only 17,000 square feet. Anyone who's used that gas station knows how small it is. Aren't the stipulated requirements of space for those uses there for a reason. Now, jamming, if jamming a convenience store and a gas station into too small a space wasn't enough, the applicant was allowed to reduce the number of parking spaces for the sides of the convenience store without any reason, and to place their loading and unloading in the front of the property. The applicant gave no reason for reduction of the required parking spaces, but merely opined that customers of the convenience store could park at the pumps. Now, anybody who's used that gas station knows the difficulties of entering and exiting. The fact that there was ample space behind the office for loading and unloading zone was ignored, and the requirements of the ordinance, which is 182708 off-street loading and unloading regulations, were also ignored. But perhaps the most troubling, the request of residents to postpone consideration of the case was denied. A postponement would have allowed residents to review the video and refute the allegations made by the applicant. As stated before, the applicant was not required to do a traffic study, even though I believe that that is part of the requirement for submitting the variance application itself. It is well-known that this section of Haverford Road has numerous accidents and some fatalities. Residents testified to the dangers that they're cornered. It appears that their concerns were not taken into consideration. These variances, as residents testified, are directly detrimental to the public welfare. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sar. That is the end of the registered speakers. It is now the time of the meeting where anybody in the room who would like to speak on an agenda item can come forward. If anybody wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, it is, there is time for that later in the meeting. So let me start, as I always do, on my left in the front row. Yes, Peggy, I know you wanted to get back up.
Yes, Commissioner Trumbada wanted me to speak a little bit about Narcan. And I don't know if you all know this, but our police force was the first police force in Delaware County to administer Narcan. You have no idea how many lives these folks have saved. And if any of you take the L or public transportation, I brought some here. So I'm just going to give them to Judy. And I wanted to...
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, one of our other initiatives is, we do a lot of work down in Kensington, and Steve Wilson of Secret Sauce, he's going down there, and we make a nice meal for the folks, and we're going to do that again in the fall. So go on our Facebook site if you'd like to donate, or if you want to help, it's a great thing. Because everyone thinks that's the open-air drug down there, the drug den. But I have news for you. Some of the Haverford Township people started out down there. So our group, we donate, excuse me, I've had a terrible allergy. Our group has donated... Our group has donated money to Prevention Point down in Kensington. So it goes from Kensington to Upper Darby to Haverford. So we support them too. But thank you, and thank you guys for saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Anyone else in the front row? The second row.
Yes, my name is Peter Patton. I live at 703 Grove Place. That's directly adjacent to the Grange Field and specifically the basketball courts there. I actually play at the basketball courts, so I don't really have an objection in principle to fixing the courts. However, based on my experience with the pickleball courts and the actions of the contractor providing or dumping gravel on the hill from the plateau to the area of the pickleball courts, and no action by the township to remediate that, I am concerned that I haven't really heard anything about the details of what the contractor has done. I'd like to know the scope of the work, when it's going to happen, who's going to do it, and specifically what steps will be done to remediate the park after the work is done. Over the weekend, we had a, I believe it's some kind of pen for playing dodgeball or something that just kind of mysteriously appeared there. Again, you know, I mean, it's a pretty innocuous structure in and of itself. But there was no notice to myself as a resident. There was no notice to any neighbors. There was no email from a commissioner. There was really nothing from anyone from the township about what was going on. If I decided to put a radio telescope up there or a shed, I would assume the township would be on me pretty quickly about what I was doing. In this case, something, you know, a spaceship essentially appeared over the weekend. It must have been planned by somebody, but the neighbors were not told about it. So what I would ask is, I would ask you to defer action on these motions, specifically 14, 16, 17, to the extent it relates to the Grange Field, until there's been a meeting with neighbors and residents to hear about what the details of the contract are and specifically the steps that will be taken to preserve and basically fix up the area after the work is done. It is, there are a lot of flickers in that area, which are not really all that uncommon a bird. But there's kind of more wildlife there than you might think, including groundhogs and foxes and so forth and so on. So I suspect, I mean, the contractor actually in doing the work on the pickleball courts did a good job. But to help itself, dumped all this aggregate. I have a picture of it to show it to you. And I was told that it helped the township drive its trucks down that slope. But the slope is really something that you shouldn't be driving the truck down. I mean, the angle is like 20% maybe. It's not really the type of grade that is appropriate for driving a truck on. The contractor added a specific reason because they were using backhoes and the like to fix the court or resurface the court. But I don't think that, a lot of the work the township does with trucks in that park actually could probably be done, but like with a deer gator or something that was a lot less pressing on the grounds of the park. But that's sort of a separate issue. So anyway, that's my request. I don't really see any, I don't know about the details of whether this is a pressing issue or not financially, but it doesn't strike me that it can't be deferred for a month or two until we've had an opportunity to learn more about what the details will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, now.
Good evening. I'm Mia Brower. I live at 123 County Line Road in Bryn Mawr. My property backs up to the Polo Field, and I'd like to return to that comments which were made earlier.
So the Polo Field is not on our agenda tonight? We're not taking any action?
I'm sorry, I had heard him talking about it, and I wanted to add some other details.
So what you can do is later in the meeting, we invite folks up to talk on any topic, whether or not it's on the agenda. So I will look forward to you returning to us. In the next row. And in the row behind that, and finally, the back row on the left. Anybody? Here to the right. Anybody? Second row, third row, fourth row. Okay, thank you. We had several speakers on recovery month. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for the Narcan. Peggy, thank you for your work on Hada and the work of all your colleagues. Mr. McKinney, I can assure you that issue is under serious consideration by the township right now, and it's something that's being, that is being discussed between our township and Lower Marion Township and the Lower Marion School District. And we appreciate your comments and your perspective and experience there. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Dunlop and Ms. Sar, I can address you both. This is a, this is a decision by the zoning board. Haverford Township has standing as an interested party in matters that happened before the zoning board. So it is something that we will be advised on and review the, review the opinion when, if and when it is issued, and then seek advice from our solicitor as well as input from our fellow commissioners as to whether this is something the township should appeal. It is, at this stage, premature to do that as a decision has not yet been, as I understand, not yet been issued. But certainly, I appreciate your exhaustive and encyclopedic analysis of the issue. So thank you for that. Thank you for the, the handout that you provided to all of us. And sir, about the Grange, I'm going to ask, I will ask Brian Barrett to discuss what the specifics are on that contract as well as what the township's expectations are of what contractors will do and what they'll leave behind and what they won't leave behind in, with regard to, with regard to the work on that park. I imagine, well, I'll let him speak to it. I do imagine time is a little bit an issue as we don't want to get into the winter. But I will, I will count on Mr. Barrett when we get to the first of the several matters on our agenda that address that and ask him to address all your questions. And that is it for comments on our registered speakers and agenda items. So if I could move to the next topic. We will now have an update from the Bureau of Fire.
Mr. President, before I give the formal update, I'd just like to, on behalf of our board, our township staff and employees, and the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire, offer our condolences to the Bonner Fire Company, who last week lost one of their young members who passed away suddenly. And it, very traumatic experiences, as you explained with 9/11. Members of the Bureau of Fire, all five fire companies are very touched by this. I think Chief Loyola was talking about it earlier. Anybody that watched 60 Minutes last night, even though it's 22 years later, I still can't not tear up at some of the stories of those things because it's going on for there. And hopefully, it's not, as the one woman said, one young firefighter, she said, hopefully, it's just not a page in history to die. So this has affected, this loss has affected that individual fire company greatly. I'd like to thank the Police Department, our EMS department, and the other fire departments who came to the aid of Bonner. I think members of Bureau of Fire or the township fed them that evening. And then we, our EMS and Police Department made arrangements with the county grief team to come in, which is very beneficial. And it's, it's a very hard thing to go through, similar to some of the other losses there for a young person to pass away so suddenly with other young people in attendance. So our condolences to the Bonner Fire Company, and we will do anything we can to assist them in the future. The formal report from the Haverford Township Bureau of Fire for the month of August, there are a total of 71 fire rescue incidents. 61 of those occurred within the confines of the township. 10 were out of town and were mutual aid incidents. The average number of personnel responding per call was 18. There were 1,741 personnel hours committed to those incidents. There were 590 personnel hours in the month committed to training. We provided mutual aid to three working fires within Delaware County. We also responded to a drowning incident on Ellis Road. And then we responded to, Bureau of Fire responded to two vehicle accidents, both with entrapment. One was at Vermont Road in Stump Lane with very serious injuries. The vehicle was overturned. And the other one was at Westchester Pike and Eagle Road, which many saw on the news, where the truck was sandwiched between a SEPTA bus and a semi tractor trailer with serious injuries in that accident as well. That represent the month of August, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wexler. Our next item on the agenda is the township auditor update. Welcome back, Mr. Anderson.
First and foremost, congratulations to the new officers. I know they already left, but I must say congratulations. Also, second, most importantly, go Eagles. They couldn't just make it look easy, though. They had to give up that lead and wait till the end to pull it out. I also feel like a fool for going to bed early on Thursday night because my Lions rallied against the Chiefs. And yeah, they got revenge for the Eagles fans, though, at least. Other than that, I did review the warrants and expenditures for this month, and my questions were answered to my satisfaction, and there were no irregularities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next item is Mr. Berman's update.
Commissioners, two items. The Pensy Trail project is underway. Most of the work right now involves clearing of brush and removal of some trees as necessary. It's going to be a 10-foot-wide paved trail. It's got to connect to a pedestrian bridge, which will need to be fabricated off-site and brought in at some point next year to be set in place. The contractor is going to be building abutments along Manoa Road here to support that bridge. There'll be some retaining walls back further by the shopping center. And some stormwater management work that will be along the entire trail. It's a big project. It's a lot more complex than just blazing a trail. So we're very excited about that, and we'll be having a meeting with the neighbors very, very soon. The library project, so the design of the library, this is the expansion and addition project. The design is, I would say, 99.9% complete. We expect the bid documents within the next several days. If all goes well, we're going to open those bids in October. So in the middle of October, we'll have the bids opened. And if everything comes in order, I'm going to ask the commissioners to meet for a special meeting to consider awarding those contracts and will obviously advertise this. But if all the stars align, we're going to be awarding those contracts on Monday, October 30th at 7:00 PM in this room. And so that's the plan. Again, a lot of things have to fall into place, but that's our goal. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting minutes of August 14th, 2023.
I move to approve the meeting minutes or of August 14th.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues about the minutes? Any corrections, additions, deletions? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, you call the roll.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Going to abstain because I wasn't present at the meeting.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
How about me?
Commissioner Holmes, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of warrant. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the following warrant, number nine, 2023, totaling $3,552,798.50. General and sewer fund payroll for August 17th, 2023 in the amount of $806,345.03. General fund payroll for August 31st, 2023 in the amount of $736,464.50. General fund disbursements, number nine, 2023 in the amount of $1,149,829.95. Sewer fund disbursements, number nine, 2023 in the amount of $577,983.1. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number nine, 2023 in the amount of $47,172.50. Capital projects fund disbursement, number nine, 2023 in the amount of $103,095.29. American Rescue Plan Fund Disbursement, number nine, 2023 in the amount of $114,619.35. Credit card statement ending August 27th, 2023 in the amount of $17,288.87.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments, additions or deletions to these warrants? Hearing none, Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grup?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler? Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the annual minimum municipal obligation approval. I will, we spoke about this last week, only to speak about it that we would speak about it this week. So after entertaining a motion, I will then ask Assistant Township Manager, Finance Director, Ms. Cuthbertson, to go over the MMO for us.
So we have a motion. Motion to approve annual certification of minimum municipal obligations as prepared by Thomas J. Anderson and Associates.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Cuthbertson, could you just go over this real fast with us?
The MMO is a calculation that's done every year. That stands for a minimum municipal obligation, and that represents the minimum amount that this board will have to include in its budget next year. So this is the public acknowledgement of that and certification of the calculation done by our pension advisors. So on the paperwork before you, the amount we are certifying is shown on line nine for the police-defined benefit plan, the civilian-defined benefit plan, and then the civilian-defined contribution plan. As part of the budget process, we will go through and see if staff can recommend to you through the proposed budget if we can contribute more than the minimum, but we need to certify at least the minimum.
Anything unusual in this year's?
This was an evaluation year. We are, we get an actuarial valuation performed every two years. So this MMO and the 25 MMO are based on this most recent actuarial valuation that is dated 1-1 every other year. So we're at the 1-123 valuation. It's updated for market wins and losses. And as everybody probably understands, last year was not a good, not a good year for investments for anybody. It updates mortality tables and things like that. So we do have a ways to go to get back up to the funding levels that we had achieved through all the more recent years of funding more. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that in the future budgets.
Nonetheless, the strength of our pension is something that the financial markets look at when they rate us AAA on our latest borrowings?
Yes.
So we have nothing to be alarmed at at this point?
Favorably on it. We are a level one from the Auditor General's office. The Auditor General rates every pension plan in the Commonwealth. We are, out of three, we're a level one, which means we're not fully funded, but we're almost there. We're just a step under. So that is our goal, to get to that fully funded level.
Great, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
I do have a brief question. Given, obviously acknowledging the market fluctuation and the fact that we're in an evaluation year, just looking at the numbers as they came out, are they, you know, do you see anything that you are concerned about on behalf of the township?
Well, we had a double-digit loss in 2022, which, like I said, is not unexpected. is not unexpected. We had made real progress in years leading up to last year in getting our funding percentage up. Fifteen years ago, it was in like the fifty percent range of funding in each of the plans. We had gotten it up to the eighty percents up until last year. So last year took a hit, which makes our MMO go up. So even the minimum is going up than what we're used to. So we're just going to have to let the budget season play out and see if we can contribute more. I would like to contribute more again to get up to those funding levels that we worked so hard to get to prior to twenty-two.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Cuthbertson or for anybody? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey? Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The board will now consider the approval of three tax settlements. We will consider them one at a time. I will entertain the first motion.
Motion to approve settlement stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at two fifty Westchester Pike, D.C. Folio twenty-two oh-two zero-one-two-eight-zero dash zero-zero, pending in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County, number C V two thousand twenty-two zero-zero nine-four nine-eight, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. I will consider a motion for second tax settlement.
Motion to approve settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for the property located at zero South Eagle Road, D.C. Folio twenty-two zero-nine one-zero-six-five-seven dash zero-zero, pending in the Court of Common Pleas, Delaware County, number C V two thousand twenty-zero-zero eight-four nine-two, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Motion to approve the settlement and stipulation of council on the matter of an owner-initiated property tax assessment appeal for property located at five Landillo Road, D.C. Folio number twenty-two zero-two zero-zero-six-five-zero dash zero-zero, pending in the Court of Common Pleas, Delaware County, number C V two thousand twenty-zero-zero nine-two-two-three, and authorize counsel and proper officers of the board to execute necessary documents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the only ordinance we will be considering tonight. Ordinance number P-ten of two thousand twenty-three. We will entertain a motion.
Mr., I'm sorry, I don't have it pulled up. Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P-ten two thousand twenty-three establishing and rescinding traffic restrictions on the following highways. Special purpose parking zones established in front of fifteen thirty-one Dorchester Road and rescind in front of twenty-five forty-five Rosemont Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. We now move to resolutions. We have four to consider tonight. The first resolution, Resolution twenty-three twenty-three of twenty-three twenty-three, I'm sorry, of two thousand twenty-three, happened for Township Day. We will entertain a motion.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number twenty-three twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing Chief John Viola to execute any and all documents with Penn Dot and be responsible for the safety and welfare of residents utilizing state highways on Haverford Township Day, Saturday, October seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. And do we need to do, to, to do, to do anything if there's a rain date? Because I know that here there is a rain, rain date. So do we need to change this to the eighth as well or anything?
Chief, I'm assuming that whatever documents you're going to execute and do with Penn Dot take into account the rain date?
We will adjust that tomorrow. It will not be an issue as far as what you have to do tonight. We'll make that adjustment tomorrow.
Well, we passed the, we, I suspect we will pass the resolution with the understanding that this takes into account the entire Haverford Township weekend barring.
Sure. Big, the big, the big day for the.
Conditioned upon the weather.
Think Brian Barrett wanted to make it a two-day event next year anyway, so.
I think Mr. Barrett made the right call last year, but the two of us, everyone agrees with us could fit in a very small room. Okay, so we have a resolution, a motion and a second before us. Any questions or comments other than the ones we've just beaten into the ground? Hearing none. Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes. Next for our consideration is Resolution twenty-three twenty-five of two thousand twenty-three. This is ARPA money purchase, basketball backstops. This includes work at the Grange Park and Preston Park. We'll entertain a motion. Yes.
Adopt Resolution number twenty-three twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three. That the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approves the use of fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the purchase of backstops in Grange Park and Preston Park.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Would our Parks and Rec Director just address some of the issues that were raised by one of our constituents?
Sure. So this purchase is for just the backboards and rims. The one further down on our list is the, actually the installation and paving of the courts and taking down some of those fences. Prior to the, you know, the awarding, I mean, after the awarding and contract, we'll have a pre-construction meeting with the engineer, myself, and the contractor. We'll go over how they'll access the site, least areas of disturbance, and also how we restore it after the fact. Going back to the questions that were posed in relation to the pickleball courts that were installed at Grange, we did a similar process and the area the gentleman referenced was already significantly eroded. So the contractor said he was going to put down some stone and we did that. Then after the, the courts were put in, we went back to try to restore it and we actually covered the area for about six or eight weeks in the spring, trying to get grass to grow. The challenge to get grass to grow there for a few reasons. There's a row of trees there and the pavilion is there and then the traffic is there. So the grass is not growing at the top of the hill, leading to during rain events, the we're rushing down a hill, creating significant ruts. And that's what the stone was meant to address. And then we went back in to try to address the grass situation. We were able to get some grass to grow and we're going to try to do it again this fall during the growing season, but it is a challenge there because of the reasons I just said. High traffic area, the impervious surface related to the pavilion, and there's a row of trees there that have exposed roots that are causing issues in getting grass to grow. But with every project we do, we would have the contractor talk about how it's going to restore the site to what it was beforehand. So what it is right now is better than it was prior to the installation of the pickleball courts, but still not good enough and we're going to try to improve that.
Will you come to some degree of confidence that their, their work now won't make it worse?
Yeah, well, this, the area that he, that he was referring to was related to the pickleball work. They're not going to be anywhere near that area. They're going to be on the other end of the park coming in off of Grove Place because the basketball court is located at the far end of Grange Park. So their access is only about a few hundred feet to get to the, the basketball court. So we expected that we wouldn't have the issues that we dealt with when we were doing the pickleball work.
Any variances in topography that?
Slight grades there coming in off of Grove Place. And I was actually there today, meeting with Commissioner Hart and looking at a few things. And there's some, you know, coming off of Grove Place, there's a grade and there's no grass growing in that spot because there's shade and it just isn't possible to grow grass. Coming into the park where the grass is, we will make sure that it's restored to what it was. Well, the contractor will make sure it's restored to his condition prior to the work being done.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Barrett?
To follow up, the structure that you're referring to is a gaga pit that was an Eagle Scout project that the Eagle Scouts had gotten permission from the Parks Department to install. I didn't know when the installation was going to be, so I couldn't give you an update, but that's, it was all volunteer work.
And we had a previous gaga pit that was put in by another project at Paddock Park and it's very, very popular. And it was a similar Eagle Scout project at the time. I mean, it's fairly innocuous structure, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Am I allowed to do this? I don't know.
Actually not.
No, okay.
But, but I, but, but I, I will raise your issue. Brian, I think there's concern raised by some of the neighbors and constituents about perhaps notice about the things that are going on here.
Okay, well, prior to the, like, we can, I can meet with Commissioner Hart and we can set some time to talk to the neighbors about the basketball project before it starts so they understand what's going to happen.
Actually, if you could tell this person who obviously isn't at all hip to anything what a gaga pit is and how it appeared out of nowhere?
It's basically a round area that's about three and a half feet high of wood panels and you're presenting like a pen of some kind where they can play dodgeball. And the dodgeball is you're hitting a ball, trying to hit people between their knee and their foot.
It has to, it has to roll on the ground.
Yeah, it has to roll on the ground, yes. And it's, it's, it's a very popular game. Limwood, when they put in their installation of the school, when they did the school, new school, they put one in. And, you know, a lot of our playground programs have asked if we could have one. We actually have a portable one that we've moved around town over time because it's very popular. So we, we move it from playground to playground during our summer playground program.
Is this a permanent structure?
Yes. I mean, it's not, it's not cemented into the ground. It could be moved, but once it's there, yes, it's a permanent structure.
It's the pickleball of four to twelve-year-olds.
No, I believe you. I, I just, I, I, I've been around this township long enough to remember that it required a full-blown act of Congress and perhaps Parliament to even move a trash can into a, into a park. So I, I, it sounds to me like the surprise for some of the neighbors that this was appearing over the weekend was a surprise. Perhaps maybe we can make sure.
Yes.
Don't surprise folks in the future.
We can cut, communicate with the neighbors in the future about these types of projects. We've been, I've been talking to this young man for a while. It was sort of last minute that he was able to marshal his forces to get it done. So I wasn't anticipating it was going to be over the weekend. I found that out Thursday and he'd already had the, the volunteers lined up. And so I, I agreed to do the project. I stopped over there on Sunday morning to check on the, the progress of the work. And I guess I could have done a better job of, you know, communicating.
Brian, I have a question. Since you offered to sit down with the Grange neighbors, would you be willing to sit down with the neighbors at Preston to talk about the basketball court there?
Sure, sure.
Right, that would be great. The, I had another question, but I'm going to ask it. Oh, I know what it was. So when you select the courts, I know we have thirty-four parks, do you have sort of like a rolling list of priorities and about how often do you say replace a court?
Ideally, you would try to do it every ten to fifteen years, at least repave them. That hasn't been what has happened due to resources. Where we decided, when we put the capital program together, we picked the courts that got the most usage and they were the ones we did first. And, and that's how we sort of went in that process. Not every court, I think, we couldn't do every court the way we've done some of them because just we're, we're putting more money where people are using the courts more frequently, where there might be youth sports leagues using them, that kind of thing. So, but ideally, you would probably do it every ten to fifteen years, replace, at least repave. And some of these courts haven't been done, like Grange probably hasn't been done in twenty-five years. That's why it was selected at this time.
Thank you.
So here's a question. Couldn't one argue that if a court isn't used and it's in bad condition, that's why it's not used and then it goes round and round? So to follow up on Ms. Cavender's question, is there a mechanism for reviewing the condition of playing courts in the various township parks to make sure that eventually or within a reasonable timeframe, every one of them is resurfaced, no matter how much they're used?
That's a great question. That's part of the, the idea of the pros plan is to do an asset inventory. You're going to hear about that a little bit later in this, in this meeting. So to do an asset inventory that not only says what we have as facilities, but also how frequently those facilities need to be either upgraded or replaced and then what that might cost so that the board and the leadership of the township can make decisions on how to allocate resources.
And it is true that some wards have a larger acreage within their boundaries than other wards. And speaking for Ward Two, we have two very tiny parks and I would love to make sure that they get plenty of TLC, even though they are quite tiny.
Yes. And I think they have. Lanark has gotten a lot of attention and I know Bailey Park also has.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondak?
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb?
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender?
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler?
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Next Resolution, twenty-three twenty-six, the use of ARPA money for the Darby Road Streetscape Project. We will consider a motion.
Motion to award the Darby Road Streetscape contract to more construction services, Glenn Mills, in the amount of $221,050. Zero cents, submitting the lowest.
Kevin? You're ahead of the agenda. We're on the resolution, which is a couple back.
Number 15.
Sorry. Number 15?
I was just excited.
No, no, I don't blame you. Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
I can't wait to spend money either, but go ahead and, yeah. Let's go ahead and do the resolution first.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2326, 2023, and that the Board of Commissioners desires to make improvements in financial investments in the township projects and initiatives in accordance with the allowable spending structure described by the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule as follows. $425,000 for the Darby Road Streetscape Phase III project, including engineering and construction management.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this resolution?
With this Phase III, what is the actual part of Darby Road that's being worked on?
This is from West Benedict to West Turnbull, so it's the bike shop down.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Our last resolution, resolution number 2327 of 2023. This is the ARPA money purchase of basketball resurfacing and the installation of the previously discussed backstops.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2327, 2023, that the Board of Commissioners of Haverford Township hereby approve the use of $101,600 of the township's American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the paving of the courts and installing new backboards in Grange Park and Preston Park.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
I actually do have another question, Brian, and I don't know, I could have asked it on the last one, but I'll ask it now. Why are we using ARPA money specifically for basketball courts?
Well, my understanding from working with Amy and Dave is that ARPA funding can be used for any outdoor parks and recreation projects. So the funding has been decided that it would come from ARPA and not from capital monies.
Is it all outdoor spaces?
The ARPA, the, the ARPA money?
The final ruling allowed for anything that would allow us to better prepare for another pandemic in the future, including being able to recreate outside and be outside as much as possible in safe spaces.
Thank you, that makes sense. Thanks.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Commissioner.
Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Uh, we now move to contract awards. We have several of them tonight. First one is for the Darby Road Streetscape, number three. Motion to award the Darby Road Streetscape.
Motion to award Darby Road Streetscape contract to Moore Construction Services, Inc., Glenn Mills, in the amount of $221,050 and zero cents, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Uh, hearing none.
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. Uh, our next contract award under Parks and Recreation is for the Preston Park and Grange Field Basketball Court Backstops.
Mr. President, motion to award the basketball court restoration contract to General Recreation Newtown Square, Pennsylvania, under CoStar's contract number 14, in the amount of $14,271, submitting the lowest responsible bid to be purchased with ARPA money.
Second. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. The next contract also under Parks and Recreation, the Preston Park and Grange Field. This is the basketball court resurfacing and installation.
Mr. President, motion to award the Preston Park and Grange Field basketball court resurfacing and installation of backstops to SB Conrad Incorporated, Chester Heights, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $101,600, submitting the lowest responsible bid to be purchased with ARPA money.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Berman?
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
No. Finally, our last contract is supplemental planning services for PROS. That is an acronym for Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan. To award a supplemental planning service contract.
Mr. President, motion to award a supplemental planning services contract to Herbert Rowland and Grubik Incorporated, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $25,048.15. The amount will be covered by the Delco Greenway Planning Grant Award.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Barrett, was this something you referred to earlier?
Yes. We were adding some, some additional planning to the, the PROS plan that we had originally approved last year. The original proposal in reference to asset inventory, which I was referring to earlier, was going to deliver park profiles, which would have been limited to just standard description of the park amenities and condition, total acreage, geographic location, and classification based on the National Recreation and Parks Association standards. So somewhat boilerplate information. We were looking for a more robust asset inventory that verifies our inventory, categorizes life expectancy of the equipment, adding cost replacement of the amenity, and then organize the asset inventory into an asset management plan spreadsheet to predict replacement year and cost, like we were referring to earlier in reference to the basketball courts. And that would include inflation, escalation fees, and then it would suggest some bulk purchasing strategies based on asset management plan spreadsheet. And then in reference to the maintenance, we were looking for more information on maintenance because, as we've said many times at these meetings, maintenance is a challenge, and we're trying to figure out what the allocation of resources would be to, to meet the maintenance needs for our parks and our playgrounds. So we were looking for a more robust maintenance plan, which would include comparing staffing levels to other communities within our area, in a region of similar structure, to make recommendations for staffing levels, establish a level of care and standards based on maintenance needs, amenities, and the current conditions, and prepare criteria for inclusion and annual maintenance plan for the park system. Basically, we're trying to get implementable information from this PROS, PROS plan that can help guide our decision-making in the future as we keep up our assets and, and replace them. So the original plan, we felt, was a little lacking in that area, and those are the two areas that, when we went into this plan, we were really focusing on. And as Commissioner Hart said, all of this would be covered with the grant that we got from Delaware County.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any questions for Mr. Barrett, or any questions at all?
I have a question. So I can't find the details, Brian, but last week I would have asked you about this. The additional cost for the Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan was a little outrageous. It was like $7,000 for a open for, you know, I mean, it was like one more meeting. So can you explain a little bit what the $25,000 is for?
Sure, yes. There's a, there is a, I think there's a breakdown in your packet. But basically, the breakdown is the additional public meeting was $4,000. So it's a prep for the public meeting, preparing the information related to the survey results and factoring all the information they've collected between meetings, and also there are attend, you know, three staff attending the meetings. There's two additional committee meetings, $3,000. There's a staffing maintenance comparison, which was $1,823, a maintenance plan structure of $2,200, tree protection plan of $3,200, sign regulation analysis, because we had asked for that because our signage needs some work, and then an amenity replacement cars, cost analysis, which I referred to earlier. All of these have very specific people that are involved and how much they charge per hour. So there is further breakdown on this I can provide.
Yeah, I understand how consultant, consultants work. I, it's really specifically the, the public engagement part of it. That's the part that was surprising to me, that it was so expensive just to have another meeting.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how that, how that works, but yeah.
Okay, I do have one other question. So you talked about an asset inventory. I'm just curious, are you going to do plans for each park or make specific park recommendations for specific parks?
That's a good question. We had done an asset inventory, we being the Recreation Department, in 2018, prior to development of the capital campaign that started in 2019. So we went to every park, took pictures of every piece of equipment, every ball field, every backstop, every tennis court. We use, we provided that information to the planner, and that was supposed to be the guide of what we're hoping to get back on, some of these, these other features we've asked for, replacement costs, you know, time of replacement, that type of thing. So each park, they'll limit, they'll list every piece of equipment, what condition it is, and how soon they think that needs to be replaced. So that's the reason we're doing this. So in the future, because we've spent significant amount of capital money over the last five years, and the plan is to spend some more money in the next few years, we want to make sure that we're maintaining those assets in a way that the residents would like us to see do that. And along with the maintenance, also get to a standard of care that we can, we can fulfill with the resources we have, both staff and equipment.
So we sort of look at our total inventory and how we're going to replace it, as opposed to looking at parks and making plans, which I'm not advocating for one or the other, just sort of curious how it works.
But that would be, that would be the starting, the steps that you would take initially too, if you were looking at any park. Let's say we're going to look at Elwell, and we're going to say, you know, what should we do here moving forward over the next 10 to 15 years? We can say, okay, here's the equipment we have there, here's the equipment that may have to be replaced over the next five, 10, or 15 years. And again, a lot of those decisions are made based on our inspections. Like, just recently, that we, there was a fold in one of the pieces of equipment, that we had to pull out a, a portion of the equipment, it was a rail slide, and we have to see if we can get replacements. If we can't, then we might have to look at that piece might have to be replaced maybe sooner than we might have anticipated before.
Okay, but it's, there's no sort of plan for each park?
No, there's no master plan for each park.
Okay.
It'd be great if we had one, but that's a pretty significant.
But there's no plan to create a master plan? I mean, it's, yeah, it would be a lot.
It would be, it would be, it'd need to be a significant funding allocation to do something like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I do have a follow-up question too. Just with all the conversation about Polo Field and the tree aspect of the, the bus pull, proposed bus pull-off, I, I can't help but notice there's a tree preservation plan involved in this. Can you just elaborate exactly what that component is?
You know, in our parks, there's a significant number of trees, and some of those trees need attention. So what we're trying to do is get a, the same way we're reviewing physical assets, we're reviewing natural assets, the trees. So to say, if there's a tree that's over a ball field or a playground area that looks like it could be in a threat of falling down or losing a limb, then that would be something we want to look at and address.
That would be included in?
So as part of this process, but I've also been working with somebody, when we put the committee together for the PROS plan, we asked somebody from the Shade Tree, Paul David, who's the chair of the Shade Tree, to be on our committee just for this purpose because township owns a ton of trees that we have to review as assets and see how we're going to take care of them. And so in next year's budget, we've asked for a significant allocation that we can look to try to take care of some of those trees beyond what our township forces can do.
Thank you. And then, kind of, the other, the other aspect of my question is, so it sounds like the, the plan itself for this, this service is going to, you know, give us an inventory of what we have, talk about maintenance, staffing, replacement schedules. Is it going to make any kind of recommendations with regards to capital, like, capital improvements beyond, beyond just replacing? In other words, as an example, this park has all of its gear is geared towards little guys, you need something for the bigger kids, something like that?
As part of the, the citizen engagement, it was, the questions were asked, what, what amenities we might not have that you might want to see at your parks? And there were so few things brought up, whether that be some equipment that might be geared to seniors along our trails, like fitness equipment, or might be that this area, you know, needs something for older, you know, older elementary school students because most of the equipment is geared towards a younger age. So yes, we would take that information into, into account when we're trying to put together our plans moving forward. Thank you.
All right, and a lot of that information has been gathered in the last year while the study's been going on. So really, this part of it is, I think, the piece that's been missing is how do we maintain our parks every year? What money do we need to put in every year, rather than saying, okay, we're going to do this now, and look, that's only a park? This gives us a baseline to say, okay, every year, in order to maintain these 36 parks, X amount of dollars needs to go in to replace things, to repair things. Then I think that's probably the biggest thing that we hope to get out of this study.
Sounds good.
I have a follow-up question. There are two things on the supplement cost breakdown. One is staffing maintenance comparison and maintenance plan structure. And I am thinking that we have just spent like, like, um, $120, $115,000 on equipment and repaving of basketball courts at, is it Preston and Grange? Yeah, Preston and Grange. It costs a lot in terms of salaries and benefits for all the workers who help, you know, mow the fields and take care of overgrown bushes, et cetera, et cetera. So when it talks about staffing maintenance comparison, could you talk a little bit more about what information that will give us to maybe think about what else Parks and Rec needs in order to maintain our parks at, not, not just the equipment, but just maintain, like, the vegetation, et cetera, et cetera?
And that's a great question. And really, that was one of the fundamental reasons to pursue this PROS plan, because we realized that we weren't getting all the maintenance done that we would like to get done. Last year, this board allocated two new full-time positions to park maintenance, which was a move in the right direction. So this supplemental will go about talking to our people in our region, you know, the other communities, Upper Darby, Radnor, Lower Marion, Springfield, Marple, and see how they're doing. Now, I think a lot of us are struggling to figure out how to maintain our grounds in a way that we would like to. And, and over the last five to 10 years, we've added more inventory to what we have to maintain. When we put the Pennsy Trail in, we're maintaining that. We're taking down limbs, we're clearing vegetation, we're emptying trash cans, we're putting up dog dispensers, and the same thing with the Darby Creek Trail. So because we're adding these inventories and because of what we added at the reserve 10 years ago and continue to build on, there is more maintenance requirements. So what we're trying to do is try to establish a baseline, a level of care, and then figure out what's required. I'm pretty sure that what'll come back as required is we need more staffing resources. Challenge what we had over the past 10, 12 years is, we've tried to fill a lot of those spots with part-time positions, and it's difficult to maintain a part-time staff because ultimately those people will look for more permanent condition for their employment. So we're moving in the right direction by the two, the two new positions we added, and we were able to get more done this year than we had in previous years because of those positions, and also because we increased the starting salary for part-timers, so we're able to get a better summer crew, a more robust summer crew. Instead of having five, we had about eight, which really helped Jason O'Brien, who's our park superintendent, get a lot more done. We did about five or six installations at parks. When I say installations, we install our playground equipment, which allows us to understand it better, to maintain it better, to be able to care for it in the future better. But that requires time and effort, and because, like you said, the township's allocated a lot more money, we're doing more installations. So that balances, we created more work, do we have the staff to support that?
Weren't you, is it not true that you were able to do a lot more maintenance this year because you had two teams, thanks to the higher and additional equipment?
Yes, yes. We were able to separate our teams and use them more efficiently.
Which made our residents a good bit happier.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. We will consider the motion for supplemental planning services for PROS.
Commissioner Gondick.
Yes.
Commissioner Forsty Grubb.
Yes.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Cavender.
Yes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Commissioner Wexler.
Yes.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes.
Yes. We are now back to that point in the meeting where members of the public are invited to speak on items that is not confined to the agenda. Ma'am? Most welcome. All right, I'm agent K.
Um, would you like me to introduce myself again?
I would. I admit that I've.
That's all right, that's all right. Um, my name is Mia Brower. I live at 123 County Line Road in Bryn Mawr. I back up to the Polo Field, which is why I wanted to bring this up. I know it's been discussed already.
Oh, no.
Pardon, at other times it's, but I did some, I opened, had my eyes opened this weekend when I discovered that a large number of Lower Marion residents also opposed using the Polo Field by their students. It's too far commute. Um, they were also troubled by the narrow streets along Railroad Avenue and County Line Road and no other access. This was from people having, carrying around these petitions saying, um, please save uh, Oakwell. And I figured, why not talk to them when someone asked me about it? I was shocked. So then I started looking. And I noticed that there are eighty-seven hundred students in the Lower Marion Public School System, whereas Haverford Township only has six thousand five hundred and sixty. That's about a third less or a quarter less than what Lower Marion has. Lower Marion has twenty-three point nine square miles in its township. We have ten square miles in Haverford Township. So something seems askew to be bringing students with a greater number of parks and playing fields into, from Lower Marion into Haverford Township uh, to use our playing field and all the extra expense and extra usage. Currently, previously, we had about seven or eight sessions over the playing season when other schools came to play. If Lower Marion has granted its use, that use goes up triple to twenty-one or twenty-two playing days in the afternoon. The damage to the playing field will be something that will take years to repair. It has not been cared for over the years. We need to address that as you're talking about parks. I couldn't help but understand, why would we sacrifice the few trees we have in the Polo Field? I agree, Oakwell has many, many more, but all trees are giving us something special. We're talking about climate change all the time and we'll just chop down some extra trees. Um, sorry about that. Anyway, um, one of the discussions made, uh, offered by a Lower Marion Commissioner was the fact that private school students are using the Polo Field and the Black Rock students are from a public school and this is a public field. I think that we have to look at this differently. The students going to a private school, their parents are paying school taxes and property taxes as well as any other resident. Why should they be kicked out of the field so a public school student could get, from a different township, could play on that field? These parents should really be applauded for the fact that they're paying for their children to be in private school. Could you imagine what it would do to Haverford Township if all these children in private school were suddenly coming into your doors and demanding a seat in the classrooms? You'd be overwhelmed. And so we should be thanking them. And if they want to use a playing field, it should be available to them. Their taxes are making this possible also, not just the other side. We don't need um, a parking area for buses. We don't have to have this many buses coming in over the time. We don't need special seating. We've all gotten used to standing or sitting while watching games. I mean, sitting on the ground. Well, you bring a beach chair. And they're pretty lightweight. I mean, even I could carry one in, I'm getting a little older. So um, these different ideas have to be considered as we keep going forward. What the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars Lower Marion offered as a one-time payment to tie a rope around our neck and incur all the extra expense to maintain the field the way they want it, um, with the parking places for the buses, with the extra seating, with uh, buses, you know, trees removed. We're hanging a stone around our neck from which it'll take an enormous amount of time to recover. It's an open-ended contract. There's no talk about an annual reimbursement to Haverford Township from Lower Marion Township. And the other thing that I think that you have to look at is they have a budget in the millions. I don't know the exact number. I've heard anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five million dollars to build um, Oakwell into playing fields. If that's the case, maybe we should ask them to use that money instead to open and correct their own parks. For instance, at Marion Station, there's a playing field that's been closed for quite a while. Cause it needs work and it's too much trouble to go up there. They'll just come use the Polo Field and they're free and clear of expense. We need a little more equality here between resources for the two townships. So I'd like us to keep looking at this problem, evaluating it, and looking for other solutions. They have a number of unused playing fields in their township. I don't know why they're coming here when we have less space in, available and we have fewer facilities. Let's keep things going the way they have been. So let's not make any rash decisions as we move forward in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments and I appreciate that you stuck around to make them. Um, anybody, I'm sorry, Michelle in the front row, I know you want to speak. Aubrey.
Michelle Aubrey, 134 Hastings Avenue. On behalf of the Parks Board, I'd like to thank you all once again for agreeing to spend more money on our park facilities, specifically the ARPA money for the basketball courts as well as the grant money for the pros plan. Um, I think if anyone's been to all of our parks, you'll know that the Grange Court has been long overlooked and needing of repavement and Preston is close behind. So I think these two courts are the two most needy courts in the entire township for repaving and getting new basketball standards. And I think it's a, both very busy parks that there will be a lot of use of these courts. I see use, even though the courts aren't in good shape, and I think the use will increase once they're in much better shape. Um, secondly, with the pros plan, we really need to have an idea going forward. Um, just because it's, it's overwhelming when you think of all the things we've been doing in the last 10 years or so since we started with the crack. Um, and there's a lot of expectations going forward. Haverford Township is one of the most desirable communities, not only in Delaware County, but in the state of Pennsylvania because of its parks and recreation. So I commend you on spending money on that. And the other thing is if I could address the Polo Field, um, those of, some of you may know, I was the Assistant Recreation Director in Lower Marion Township from nineteen eighty to eighty-four. Um, the agreement between Haverford Township and the Lower Marion Township for the Polo Field is a deed that goes back probably eighty years. Um, and it's been in effect that long. And it's a facility that has always, always, always been shared between the two townships. And the way it works now is Lower Marion schedules those fields in question, the baseball and softball fields and some of the soccer fields on certain days of the week, and Haverford Township gets to schedule them on other days of the week. So therefore, they've already been using these fields. As to who they schedule those fields for, that's really up to them, like it's up to Haverford Township to issue permits on the days that we have those fields. And while there seems to be some discrepancy over the number of people using it and so forth, we're, we're going to be considered of the two private schools that are using those fields now to get them field space for their teams. We're not going to say goodbye, you have no use here. But at the same time, um, Lower Marion does participate in the maintenance of the Polo Field and they, you know, have a right to say who they would like to use the field. So I think we're getting stuck on, you know, public, private, what have you for the schools, whereas we need to look at the big picture, what's really going on here? And what the intention was when the person donated this land to be shared by two townships. So I just want to clear up that misconception for many people. While I, I am a tree hugger, I don't want to see another tree cut down anywhere. I do agree that we can look at other ways of transporting those kids, no different than there are smaller buses than big bus lanes need to have and so forth. So there are alternatives to getting those students and athletes into that park. But it really shouldn't be such an overwhelming issue because they've already been scheduling that park. So those are my words of wisdom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the next row, if anybody would like to speak, and the row behind that.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eric Hartman. I'm at 615 Railroad. Um, Ward five's really showing up tonight, seems like. Um, good to see you all. I was here in the past because I commented, um, when PennDOT identified Haverford Road as one of the most dangerous stretches of road so that they could do a road diet. Um, and, and those comments just suggested that we want to advocate to make sure we get best-in-class when it comes to anything that we do in that stretch. And I'm here to speak a little bit about the um, 700 Haverford Road pending, um, decisions from the zoning board. Um, in that we are understanding that five of six, um, variances requested are pending approval without any conditions. That's at least the understanding we have, um, in the community. You know, I'm here commenting as an individual this evening. I also, I work for Haverford College and every once in a while I comment in official capacities with them. I got to do that on the other side of the college when Haverford Station Road and Lancaster Avenue was under a permitting process. You might remember there used to be a yogurt shop there and you could park your car like right next to the road and then back right next into the road. And it was an ugly, nasty place to walk and all. And now there's parking spaces, there's ingress, there's egress, there's trees, there's plants, and there's like pleasant walking space with some conditions. Cause Lower Marion, we have our differences, but they understand the value of place and they understand the value of the walkability and they understand how that, you know, translates in ways to work for businesses and work for pedestrians and cyclists. Um, I would just ask that we keep those things in mind as we look at an intersection where PennDOT said, hey, Haverford Road is dangerous. And Haverford Township put a bicycle pathway in Buck Lane that was the first in the township. The neighborhood that I live in has advocated enough that we have a traffic study coming through. Thank you very much for that. So we could at least maybe wait to say that traffic study which we contracted, the PennDOT process which PennDOT has identified, maybe those things are really important before we rush away without conditions on granting a lot of changes and potentially adding a significant amount of danger to an intersection that is already, as a person who's deeply comfortable on a bicycle, a nasty intersection. It really is, uh, needs intention and thoughtfulness. Um, so thank you again for your service and I hope you'll take those comments into consideration.
Thank you very much, Hartman. Um, anybody else in that row?
Hi, I'm Josh Dupuy, another Ward five resident, along with Doreen and Joseph and Eric and David. So I'm glad to see a lot of representation for Ward five tonight. Um, I've been a resident of Haverford for almost six years and live at 762 Buck Lane with my wife, my five-year-old son and my three-year-old daughter. Uh, we're deeply rooted members of the community. We're members of the Brinford Civic Association, members of the Haverford Friends Meeting. My school, my kids attend the school there. Um, we use our local parks every day. I love how much parks has come up in this meeting. We go to Preston Park every single day and I think we've used every park in the township. Uh, and I've worked closely with Laura on traffic studies in our neighborhood, like the Brinford Safe Streets Study that Eric just mentioned. I'm here today before the Board of Commissioners to request the board take action and appeal the recent variance granted to the non-conforming use gas station at 700 Haverford Ave. And to push for a ban on games of skill in the township. During my time living in Brinford, I've learned that our neighborhood has more non-conforming uses than any other part of the township. I also know that the Township Code has a statement of intent to reduce non-conforming uses. I know this because at the same intersection of this variance request, Buck Lane and Haverford Road, the neighbors had to push back against another variance request at a different property. And here we are again, talking about a variance request for a not, for an existing non-conforming use because someone decided it was okay to put a gas station in our neighborhood in nineteen sixty. The variance in question to allow a gas station and service station to convert to a gas station and convenience store. This was approved last week despite several flaws. Among them, the zoning board ignoring their mission to reduce non-conforming uses. The non-conforming use should be limited to that use and once it is no longer viable, should revert to the zoning of the township. And yet the zoning board here has done the opposite. Allow the use to morph once again, to further entrench itself in the neighborhood in a place that it should have never been placed, effectively making the zoning board the planners of my neighborhood, a pure, a purview that they should not hold. The owners used a flawed logic, a flawed argument of economic need for the change from a service station to a convenience store, something that should not even be considered for variance. The owner states that the service station is no longer very profitable, although I didn't see any evidence to that point. The argument is that they need a better accompanying business with the gas station when gas is no longer a thing. I found it hard to believe that a mini mart could support the business once we move on to the age of electric cars, whenever that will be. But then at the end of the variance request, the truth emerged. The addition of the mini mart, the store would be adding two games of skill. Before we discuss the game of skill, I'd like to give a better understanding of my neighborhood, which is just up the road from the gas station. Within a block and a half is the Friends School, or nursery to fifth grade. At the end of that block is the Haverford Boys School. In the other direction, four blocks is Cooper Town Elementary and within two blocks is Haverford College. On the 700 block, block of Buck Lane where I live, I counted forty-two addresses and there are at least fourteen children there under the age of ten. That's one in every three houses. And a school for every block of a radius from the gas station. So what is a game of skill? Perhaps the best way to describe it is that you would have to do quite a bit of reading and research to figure out just exactly how it differs from a slot machine. It's not the easiest distinction. By the way, my son's name is Louis. He's turning five years old in November and he is just learning how to ride a bike for the first time. So when the zoning board asked if the game of skill was a deal breaker, the owner said yes, that they would need to keep those in order to move forward with the variance. Which makes me wonder, is it that the service station wasn't profitable? Or that it wouldn't be as profitable as these machines? Is the goal here to put in a mini mart or a mini casino? My daughter's name is Rita, she turned three years old and last week is her first day of school. Harrisburg has still failed to provide definitive legislation around these machines. To date, some specific machines in some counties have had favorable rulings allowing them to be used in bars or gas stations. I had a conversation today with Delaware County DA Douglas Rhodes, who said that while legislation is gray and evolving at the state level, he mentioned Criminal Statute Title 18, Section 5513, which reads, which he reads as stating, it is a criminal act to own and operate one of these machines and the county's stance is to enforce and prosecute these illegal gaming machines of skill. The zoning board referred to them in passing as an arcade. DA Rhodes also stated that the township should have the ability to enact its own ordinance outright banning the machines. My children are also friends with two families at the bottom of the street. A four-year-old boy and a two, his two-year-old sister and a four-year-old girl and his one-year-old brother. They live so close to the gas station that they can see its sign in the winter when there's no foliage. Perhaps because their lack of oversight and lack of regulation, as well as their addictive nature and game-like appearance, that makes it nearly impossible to prevent children from playing them as opposed to say, a slot machine on a casino floor. Perhaps that's why Senator Amanda Capaletti is seeking a cosponsor for a bill to ban games of skill outright in the state. The most recent real estate sale in my street happened near the end of 2022. It sold for over half a million dollars, thirty-one percent increase from the last time it sold in 2019. I have to wonder when I see that family pushing their stroller down the street, if they shelled out all that money to be in walking distance to a great school or gas fumes and slot machines. The same gas station that was shuttered for several weeks this year because they had to have an environmental cleanup. My biggest concern in my neighborhood has been that my kids would be hit by a driver texting down a street that has two-way traffic, a school, two schools, a park and no sidewalk. When my son goes to Cooper Town in a couple of years, my hope is that we could ride our bikes, the five-block commute rather than getting in our car. And yet that intersection is the biggest obstacle to doing that. How does changing the service station to a mini mart change that? I don't know. But neither did the zoning board who passed the variance, and that's the problem. They took that away when they granted a variance without even considering it. Somehow the traffic and pedestrian concerns that my neighborhood has worked on for years to just get a study done was in a couple of weeks trumped by a business request to add unregulated gambling in a neighborhood full of schools and kids, soon to be old enough to ride their bikes to that mini mart. The township has had the great fortune of an increase of young families. The township has had the great fortune of an increase of young families moving in, residents invested in the well-being of the community, long-term stakeholders, participants in schools, businesses and government for decades to come. And yet on my street and my neighborhood, the township is investing in my family by allowing child-accessible gambling video games within eyesight. Do you think families on my block are going to continue to invest in their community when zoning laws are not enforced? When a vice-based business is allowed to operate in a neighborhood full of schools and children? Or will they just leave? My ask is that the Board of Commissioners do everything in their power to right this wrong of this granted variance at 700 Haverford Road. Rein in the zoning board on variances and non-conforming uses. Make them consider walkability, traffic studies and pedestrian safety a top priority and not an afterthought. Enact the condition to this specific variance that no games of skill can be added to the site and ban throughout the township these thinly veiled slot machines advertised as a game of skill. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you for hanging through the evening and doing what you do. It's admirable, so really thank you for your efforts. I can't be as eloquent as Josh, but I would like to second his point, but also elaborate on one point that he made, which was the zoning board, really zoning for his district, zoning hearing board, enacting zoning for the district. David Shannon, I live at 748 Rugby Road and I do want to comment on the variance that was granted to the gas station at 100 Haverford Road. I do want to speak to another concern, but I share the concerns of the other speakers about the danger. I use that gas station. It's, I forget the name of the character in the movie, but I consider myself an excellent driver. And that's really a challenge to get in and out of that gas station. Mainly because you're exiting onto Haverford Road, you're entering from Haverford Road, it's in a curve of the road. It's just, you've heard those comments from others. I second the comments, especially considering the hour. But it's already highly dangerous. There are serious accidents there. Employees from the nursing home walk to the train station for the 100. They come and go across Haverford at that spot. There have been deaths crossing the street. And really serious accidents as recently as three months ago, not right at that corner, but along Haverford Road at that stretch. But to turn to my concerns specifically, and those are my concerns, those are really important concerns for all of our safety. But I'm also concerned about the rule of law in our township, about how our township decides and administers state law and its own code, specifically laws that provide for the orderly and professional planning and zoning in the township. That issue is not, I support the request of others that the Board of Commissioners review the decision of the zoning hearing board, consider whether there is an appropriate remedy that meets the concerns that have been expressed. And if that includes taking an appeal, then so be it. I understand, however, that appeals from zoning hearing boards decisions are not like properly and expectedly, should not be undertaken lightly. It's a serious decision for a planning commission, for a Board of Commissioners to challenge its own zoning hearing board. And again, not something one would do lightly. However, this is a concern which, when a decision is made by a zoning hearing board that is not within that zoning hearing board's jurisdiction, but invades the jurisdiction, the power, the authority of this body, then I think that is an appropriate time to rein in the zoning hearing board. That issue is not just about one convenience store. It affects and guides the behavior of every property owner, every individual and family, residential and business owners in every corner and every district of the township. If I could just explain the point a little bit about why it's a invasion, I'll try to be brief on this point. The governing law is the municipality's planning code, as I'm sure you're all familiar with that code, at least that it exists. Not always easy to interpret, but it's there. And that governs zoning throughout the Commonwealth. The, in sum, zoning is a legislative function, meaning the elected board, you, the Board of Commissioners of the township, make the decision, make the decisions on how the township should be zoned, what each district should, where the lines are and what uses are permitted in each district. Municipality planning code also provides for variances and specifically for jurisdiction to the zoning hearing board to grant a variance. But it's jurisdictional. It means the power of the zoning hearing board is specifically limited to the requirements to granting a variance only when the requirements in the municipality planning code have been met by the evidence of any applicant seeking the variance. In other words, the zoning hearing board is not free to say, we think the zoning here at this corner would be better than what's passed by the commissioners. They're only, they're only free to grant a variance if they meet the requirements in the municipality planning code, which incidentally are also expressed in the Haverford Township zoning code. The, so what happened here? Well, you've heard about those criteria. The main, in sum, the criteria is to have a variance, there must be an unnecessary hardship caused not by economics, but by the condition of the land itself. Something about the land, a river, the boundary lines, the contours that prevents the owner from using its property in accordance with zoning. It's an exception to the zoning of the neighborhood. And there's no other use and conformity with zoning that could continue. And most important, there's no injurious effect on the community. You've heard about the testimony, that there was not testimony on those factors. In particular, as you've heard, no traffic study, no traffic expert, nothing about the safety of the location. And in fact, not from what I heard, we haven't seen their findings of fact or conclusions or explanations yet, but from what I observed, there doesn't seem to have been any evidence on an unnecessary hardship on the heart of what they are required to do. The main argument of the owners seems to have been, as was said, economic issues, increased income, perfectly fair and reasonable, but not a basis for a zoning hearing board to rezone the district. It is increased profitability for the desired use is not a factor. It's just not a concern, it's not a factor. If I could just conclude or almost conclude with a...
How about conclude?
Conclude? I'm close.
Yeah.
I'm close. I just want to read from the treatise, the leading treatise on the subject.
I'm going to ask you not to read from the lead treatise.
Okay. It just basically says...
You've made excellent points, as everybody and as I indicated a long time ago, this is not yet even ripe for us to do. This is very informative. We're going to be informed, all this stuff by our solicitor.
Great.
And you are right that we take it very, that it's a very serious step. But this is also a serious situation, not every day that we have the entire, you know, a significant number of people award come out about an issue after it's the zoning. So not saying that it could cut you off, but just...
No, I understand. The points are available and I'm sure our solicitor knows about Ryan on zoning. So I will cut it short and just conclude with the... If you conclude that the zoning hearing board was acting outside its authority, then I think it's really important that you take action to remedy that because they really are invading, usurping the authority of this body, which undermines the orderly zoning and planning in our township. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shannon. Anybody else in that row? Anyone else in the row behind him? Hi. And I will, when we get through the rest of these comments, I will let you know where we are. Thank you, Ms. Wragge. Anybody in the row and the last row? Anybody here in the front row? Yes?
Forgive me, citizens. I have a question when you get to the end. Larry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Holmes. In the votes that were taken, it seemed to me that everyone voted for the playground equipment, but you alone voted against the money to install it. I'm sorry, it wasn't at the working session and so I don't know if there was discussion about that, but I was curious if you could explain that to us.
I will be happy to explain my vote, yes, when we finish. Explain my vote. Next row? Final row? Oh, wait, yes.
Sorry, my legs fell asleep.
So did some of our ears.
I wasn't going to say that. I'm Brian Ramona, the ninth ward. I wanted to give a specific commendation to Haverford Police. Bill mentioned that horrific accident on Westchester Pike. I reported from that crash scene myself that night and it's one of the worst ones I've ever seen in my 30-plus years of seeing accidents like that. And interestingly enough, down on Township Line Road, not long after that, several days after that, there were two accidents, not quite that serious, but serious enough where there was injuries. And I'm reminded, seven years ago, on Township Line, I live just up Township Line, up Bellfield Avenue from Township Line, I lost my neighbor Dave Powers to a driver who was going 100 miles an hour down Route One who broadsided him. And as I did last year, and I do pretty much every year, I want to encourage everyone to talk to anyone that you know and if you know any legislators or anyone who can get any traction in the legislature to get the police department the tools they need, specifically radar guns to hopefully kind of slow some of these people down. And I've heard some issues on Haverford Road with this gas station, some serious accidents there. Believe me, Township Line is probably 50% worse. So hopefully we can get some traction and Chief Viola and everybody can get additional tools. So everybody does such a fantastic job that that scene last week was, or a couple of weeks ago was unbelievable. Between the accident itself and the traffic control and the crowd control, you guys did an amazing job. So just wanted to let you know about that. I have one question about item 11. The first of the tax settlements was for 250 Darby Road.
Westchester Pike.
I mean, I'm sorry, for Westchester Pike. As I understand it, that was a settlement, so they actually wanted to pay less taxes than they were assessed? I'm assuming that's what the settlement was for? I just kind of...
So as a rule, I don't have this in front of me, but as a rule, tax appeals by property owners are to reduce the assessment that's been put on them, which would then by definition reduce their overall annual tax bill?
Okay, understood. I just, the irony of that is if none of you know what 250 Westchester Pike is, that happens to be Kohl's, probably one of the biggest users of tax dollars and having the police department there for constant times of people stealing from the place. So the fact that they wanted to pay less taxes, I find pretty much ironic. One thing I wanted to finish with, and I wanted to give a shout out to Amy, Amy Cuthbertson, who I'm, to preface this, I'm on the Historical Commission. This is my, finishing my fourth year. I started a couple of weeks before COVID, so it's been kind of a challenge. One of the projects I took on is something that many communities have, is they have a program for buildings and properties in their townships to place plaques on them, to designate them as historic buildings and to really celebrate the fact that they're historic buildings. I have in my hand, finally, after 18 months we've been working on this, an actual sample of one. We're going to review it at our meeting next Monday here in the Township Building, Monday night at 7:00. And we hopefully, we're going to be able to come to you and actually show it so you can see what it looks like. And hopefully we'll be able to talk about a program where we can get some of these onto some of the buildings. I know we've talked about the old Township Building as one. But it's pretty exciting to bring some visibility to the Historical Commission. Our whole goal is to help preserve the historical nature of this township. I've been here for 21 years now and I relish everything that I've done to help preserve some of the township and I hope this will go a long way to helping people that own properties be proud of the properties they have. So thank you.
And we appreciate your work on that behalf as well. Anyone else in that second and last row? Final row?
Major Peterson, United States Army, retired, Derwin Drive. You know, I've spoken about progressivism, which has infiltrated and infected today's Democratic Party and the resultant failure in those communities that have adopted it. Now, progressivism is wholly different from those American-loving Democrats such as President John F. Kennedy and Senator John Glenn from Ohio. But you see, progressive Democrats like Mayor Jim Kenny and Larry Krasner, they're not only horrible at their jobs, okay, but they promote a failed ideology and policies, things like defund the police and no cash bail, which is responsible for higher violent crime rates that bleeds into our suburbs. So let's look at Chester County, shall we? August 31st, that's when the convicted murderer escapes from the Chester County prison in which he's housed. Chester County has been on edge for the last 12 days. Would you agree with me that Chester County's reputation for a quote, "safe community in which to live, work and go to school," end quote, has been severely diminished? Let's look at the facts of this case. It's a convicted murderer. He's an illegal alien in this country. Don't know why he's here. He's also wanted in his homeland, a Brazil, for murder. The convicted murderer stabbed his girlfriend not 12, not 24, not 36 times. No, he stabbed her 38 times in front of her children. His method of escape was identical to that method used by a convict that escaped from the same prison just three months prior. Chester County authorities were reluctant to share a picture of the convicted murderer with the public and they waited five days before contacting the state police for assistance. So who runs Chester County now? Well, it's run by the Democrats. You got all three commissioners that are Democrats. You got a district attorney that's a Democrat and you got a sheriff who's a Democrat. The Democrat DA, now she's running for a judgeship. Shouldn't she have charged this man with the death penalty in this case because his crime meets the requirements for the death penalty? Why didn't she do that? Why not? Then you got the Democratic sheriff. She's also running for a judgeship. She lets the convicted murderer circulate in the general prison population of a normal garden variety misdemeanor-level criminals instead of 24-hour, seven-day-per-week solitary confinement. What's her explanation for that? There is none. Okay? Then you got the three Democratic council members who are running for reelection. They oversee the Chester County Prison Commission and appoint its warden. What changes have been made since May's escape? That way, it would prevent some sort of future escape. Well, obviously, there were no changes because there was an escape on August 31st in this exact same manner. Do these Chester County Democrats even think of the police activity as being involved in public safety? I really don't. You know, Chester County progressive Democrats, they do not value public safety. And what they'd prefer to do instead is focus on things that are not their sworn duty to focus on. So when will the Chester County residents recognize that their Democrats are progressive, they're soft on crime, and they'll vote those Democrats out of office in order to reestablish a community where public safety is the primary focus of local elected officials? And I'll remind you that tomorrow, we go on to Day 13, where we have an escaped convicted murderer running around in Chester County. Maybe we won't even see him in Delaware County. Who knows? Who knows where he is? That's the great paradigm we have with the Chester County progressive Democrats. So thank you.
Would anybody else like to say anything? We'll move on. Actually, before we move on, let me just answer a couple of things. Generally speaking, I've spoken on the Polo Fields issue, which is that we are... All of these things are under consideration, the issue of what we're going to do with police. But what Mrs. Alvera raised at the beginning is something that is very important for everybody to understand. This is not us suddenly deciding whether Lower Marion can start using an 18-acre property of ours. This is something that, for decades, has been subject to the mixed use of both townships and both school districts. This is an opportunity for Lower... For Haverford Township to take ownership of this park. And that is something that's extremely important for the long term for us to be able to do. Now, that doesn't mean we trade it by, you know, clear-cutting a bunch of trees and not taking into account the safety of our citizens and the needs of our students. But it is an opportunity that has not existed up until this point, and it is something that it is our duty, as the stewards of this township, to, if we can, take literally possession of an 18-acre property on the edge of our township that has been in limbo for a number of decades. It is something that we have to examine and have to look at very closely. So I do appreciate everybody's comments. We do listen to all of them. And no action has been taken to date other than continuing to talk about and raise these issues as they're raised to us. So thank you for that. As far as the zoning board goes, their decision, we wait their decision, and then we'll review the record, look for advice from our solicitors, and then do what we do as a board, which will be to deliberate whether or not the township should appeal this decision. We have that right as interested parties. And we do appreciate all the information that's provided to us and the perspective of the folks whose lives have been most directly affected by this decision. So thank you all. Ms. Wagner from Rosewood Lane. We have not yet received the first set of revisions to the comprehensive plan from the Planning Commission's distillation of the comments of the public. So you are not... We have not hidden it on our website. It is not there yet. So I ask everybody to remain patient. It has taken 35 years. It would seem like it's taken 35 years just for this rewrite. But honestly, it hasn't. We've just been doing it now in 2023. And what we don't want to do after this amount of time dedicated to this is to screw anything up by moving too fast. So we will be reviewing and then publishing a revised plan and look forward to the input of the public. Let's see. Liz, you asked me why I voted the way I voted. I... No commissioner has to explain their vote other than the vote they cast, and they do so in public. But I will explain because it may have been confusing. I don't have any problem with backstops because whenever they get installed, we need them anyway, and they're okay. I was concerned by the issues raised by the constituent about some of the work before and after the installation of the pickleball courts. I did not strongly advocate for a no vote. So if I had to say on a scale of 1 to 10 of how hard I was trying to stop this contract from happening, I would have to admit the efforts weren't that strong. But I did feel like the person who raised the issues, I wanted to let them know that I appreciate very much the issues they raised, and I want to hold our township to some pretty strict standards when it awards significant contracts to contractors going to work on our township property. As I mentioned earlier, being stewards of our township assets, we are stewards of our township assets, and I think it's important that we guard them very carefully. So that is the explanation for what otherwise may have been a confusing vote on my part. But thank you for asking. We did pass a resolution last year, I think, and I think we've passed it several times, to encourage our state legislature to allow the local use of radar for speeding. It is a scourge, and it is a... It handstrings our police departments from being able to enforce the speed enforcement. So thank you for those comments, and we are trying to use everything in our power to do so. So I think that covers all of the topics that were discussed in these comments, and thank you all for them. I'm not going to address the Chester County Democrats. I do hope they catch that murderer. And we will now move on to new business. Is there any new business that any of my colleagues want to bring before the board?
One quick thing I'd like to discuss real fast. I don't want to make this long. But there's lots of smokes... Well, there's one that specifically moved into my ward. A smoke shop, and they disguise themselves as a convenience store. And they're able to sell things that are 80% smokes and tobacco and other things that they shouldn't sell to kids. They have slots there, like you were saying, in that area there. And then they have... Some have milk, and I don't think you're going to go into that to get milk. And some, I think you could go to Centrela's.
To go around Burgundy, milk was a terrible choice today.
Milk or lunch, or lunch, lunch, lunch meats and stuff. Or you're not going to go there. So I was wondering if we could find a way to look at this with our codes, with our zoning codes, to have this discussed on where they... I know we can't ban these type of stores, but where they can go. Because the one up here, kids walk by there every day. And I don't think that that's safe for these kids with the stuff that they sell there. And some of the people who go in there aren't safe, in my view. But that's just my view. But so I want to look out for this community so we can put a stop to that one. Well, we can't stop the one there, but we can stop other ones. So I just want to discuss that with this board, if we could look into that.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn. So in terms of it being new business, there isn't... You're not seeking any action by the board tonight, but instead raising for us the issue that has arisen right there on Eagle Road?
Oh, right, right here.
Or I'm sorry, right here on Darby, right around the corner from Brookline, right? So it would seem to me that the first place to start would be our ordinance committee to see first and foremost whether we already have ordinances that may regulate the location of such a business or the contents of that business, what it can offer for sale.
Found ways to get by when one would move in.
Yeah, I would say, yeah. Right before we can... Before we take up the issue of drafting something new, let's first see whether or not it's... There may already exist on the books laws that can be enforced because, obviously, you've raised public safety issue. And so I would suggest that the ordinance committee take this up this month, and that perhaps we also ask zoning and planning to be double-checking with Kelly Kirk on that and Joe Celia. Does this sound like a plan?
Yes, because this has been an issue that I've gotten lots of emails and calls, at least like five or six calls every day. So that's why I think we need to look into it as soon, soon, soon as we can, because they can pop up anywhere, so.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Does anybody else have anything in new business, or should we move to other business? I don't... I think I've answered my own question. We will go into other business, and I will begin with Commissioner Gondik.
Thank you. It's getting late, so I will try to be brief. First, I'd just like to extend an additional congratulations to the two new officers that we hired today. It's always nice to see, you know, new qualified candidates joining the force. So congratulations to them. Talking about police officers, I would be remiss if I didn't give a personal thanks on behalf of myself and my family to all of our first responders on this, the anniversary of 9/11. Having been a few years out of college when that occurred, that particular day still is rather vivid in my own personal memory. And the one thing that stands out, or one of the many things that stand out about that day, is the selfless devotion that our first responders give to us, that they, you know, they put their lives at risk for our personal safety and for the safety and well-being of our community. And, you know, on that day, it was an exemplification of that. But it's, you know, not to take away from it, but, you know, every day, it seems that, you know, I'm getting an email or a text or reading a news article about our first responders acting in heroic manners and saving lives and really, you know, putting their all out there. So I do want to just reiterate my thanks to them on this solemn day. That being said, on a lighter note, school's back in session. So I'm sure there are a lot of parents that are very happy about that. My little public service announcement on that is, let's be conscientious about school zones. They mean a lot. Not that they don't mean anything other times of the year, but they mean a lot more when school's in. So let's be careful with our school zones. And finally, just to kind of put this... So again, a little bit ahead of myself, but just to get to some people's calendars. The Westgate Hills Civic Association is going to be having their Halloween night on October 15th at the park. It's going to be a movie night. They're going to be showing Goosebumps. They're going to be having games and a costume contest. So if you and your family are around, put that on the calendar now so you can make sure you can attend. It's always a good time. That being said, have a nice night, and that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gondik. Mr. Forsty Grubb.
I'd like to thank Brian for that teaser of an announcement about the new plaque that the Historical Commission has worked very hard on, as he said, for 18 months. And I can't wait to see it unveiled and maybe placed some of them starting to appear in front of the many historical resources we have in our township. And we should be very proud of them because it reminds us of our history and where we're not just where we've been, but where we want to go. We are a great township, and we have great people who serve our township and protect our township. And I am very grateful for all of them, as are, I'm sure, all of our citizens. 9/11 is a day that we all pause and remember. I am a teacher, and most of my students were born well after 9/11, and they have no idea what happened unless we remember it and tell those stories of what we experienced, what we saw, how we felt. So I'm glad that we are taking time as a community to thank our first responders and to remember that day of heroism and horror. It was both, but mostly it was heroism. As always, my plug for the library. September is Library Card Sign-Up Month, and there is no better tool to provide your child or yourself for learning than getting a library card. It was this... September is Library Card Sign-Up Month was initiated by the American Library Association in 1987. So I encourage you all to check your wallets. Make sure you have that library card because you can use it to get all kinds of passes. So you can go to Shanticleer and Brandywine Zoo and Eastern State Penitentiary for their Halloween extravaganza, or lots of other places just to be out and about in our fabulous Philadelphia region. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Forsty Grubb. Mr. McCloskey.
So thank you to everyone who attended and to the organizers and volunteers this past weekend of the Haverford Music Festival. A few storms caused a couple delays, but overall, I think it was a well-attended event. And according to everyone I spoke to, they had a good time. So glad to have that back in the neighborhood and happy that it went off without a hitch, and looking forward to next year. A reminder that Kelly Music's Haverford First Fest will be at the same location on October 14th, 2023, with various stands and music, and hopefully, another fun Saturday afternoon in the Third Ward. Just to touch, reiterate everything people have said about 9/11, certainly a seminal moment in my life, given my age bracket and just sort of the state of life at the time. And certainly, for anyone... Anyone who was an American at that time, I think it's a seminal moment in your life that, you know, the world changed forever that day. And something that it's... We think about it each year, and it's, you know, it brings us back to a time of togetherness, and it brings us back to a time of appreciation for our fellow neighbors and for the first responders that sacrificed that day. I think it's a special moment and always nice to remember and recognize that moment in our history. Wanted to thank... I think they've all left at this point, but always appreciate seeing the people from Hara and the discussion of the memorial. John talked about the imagery of the memorial and what it means to him as a parent of a child that died and other family and friends. And I am grateful that we have that in the township, that they can enjoy it. I personally really like the memorial. It, for me, it symbolizes a lot of hope and hope for the future, hope for our current kids, and a recognition of the illness that that type of addiction is. And hopefully, as we recognize it more and more, there'll be greater healing for both individuals and families. But also just hope for, you know, that we can each do our part to try to make this world a better place. And it's a good reminder for me as to, you know, what I'm trying to do up here. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCloskey. Commissioner Cavender.
Thank you. I just want to join my colleagues in commemoration of 9/11. It was a big deal for all of us. It had a great impact on my life, my future trajectory. I also want to thank Commissioner Trombetta and the rest of the Community Welfare Committee for the Recovery Month resolution. Recovery is something that's really important in the community. It has impacted my life and people I love. And I, too, find a lot of hope in recovery. And I'm really happy to be part of a community that takes it so seriously and people who give their time. I want to just acknowledge the Fifth Ward residents who've come and touch on a couple of the topics that were brought up. of the topics that were brought up. Brian and Mia, thank you for coming to speak about polo. I saw that Lynn was here earlier as well. I just, I'll give a really brief update since August. A lot has happened. We've been able to dig into the details of what we want to do with dropping off kids at the field. It's important to me personally that we get these details right. I've had conversations with, individual conversations as well as small group discussions with at least three dozen people since August. I've got three more small resident meetings scheduled for this weekend, and it's clear that the bus pull-off on Railroad is not preferred, and that is putting it lightly. It wasn't possible for us to understand that until we looked into it. And that was important to me, that we understood those details. I support the use of the parking lot. I don't support taking out our beautiful canopy of trees on Railroad. Dayton Road also appreciates that view and their trees. I don't want to take down trees either. And so I, I'm glad that our whole board is taking this seriously. I look forward to our future discussions. I feel confident that Haverford is going to come out with an agreement that we want, but we're not there yet, and we're not going to make announcements before we are there. And, and I said in an email to folks, don't let our maddening pace sometimes of government convince you that there's a conspiracy, because there's not. We're all working as hard as we can to get this right. I also want to touch on the zoning board decision at 700 Haverford Road. I'll just start off by saying about three weeks ago, I actually had a collision right there at the curve coming around to that gas station. It's extremely dangerous. It's one of the most dangerous intersections I can think of to add congestion to. And I just say that as a resident. I also take seriously those comments on the two traffic studies that we have going now, the Penn dot road diet, as well as the Brenford Safe Streets study. It does seem premature to me to make a decision that's going to bring a whole lot more traffic to that intersection and to that location when we, we don't know the traffic impact. And we haven't even taken a look at the traffic studies that we do have. So I recognize the zoning board's authority, but I also have questions about this decision, and I join with Larry in saying that I hope we can look into this further. I really appreciated everyone's comments on that and their willingness to explain their perspectives, explain the ordinances. Joe, Doreen, Eric, Josh, and David, I appreciate you coming out and still being here after 10:00 PM. And with that, I will end because it is late, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I too would like to thank the Hadda, or the Hadda group, that group, that means a lot to, or to me, having a lot of people who are real close to me, who have been battling this or have lost their battle to the disease. It's great to have them in this town where they have the support, where you can go to them and talk to them about anything, and it's great to have them. And for our police, you guys got two new, new ones tonight, and I think that's great that they're joining the best force in all the area, and I know that we all agree, agree on that one. And September 12th, I know that today is such a dark day in our world, but September 12th, I just remember everybody standing, standing up at the top of the streets with flags, you didn't care what political side you were on, everybody was friends, and it was great to see everybody come out as one and, and support your friends and stuff. And that was a divided world back, like back then, and I think September 12th changed that, and I wish that we could get back to that way, that day was and how our world was then. It was bad how, how it led to, to get to it, but it was tough. It was good to see how everybody came as, as one. And one last thing, I think, 10:05, I think back when, while Larry and Bill first joined the board, that was early then. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. So have a great, a great week.
Yeah, but I was younger then. That was Bill. Commissioner Hart.
Should I go on for an hour or something?
Bring it.
Just as a follow-up to Hadda, just wanted to mention that Narcan is available now over the counter without a prescription. I know I carry some in my car, thankfully haven't had to use it, but it's something that people should consider having with them. Follow-up on the Grange Park, I did want to sort of give a shout out to the contractor that we had for the, that did the repaving of the tennis courts and installation of the paddleball courts. I think all the users are very happy with the facility. I can't say that all the nearby residents are happy about the paddleball, but as far as the work, it was very well done. Some thank yous, volunteers on a rainy Sunday along Carricon Drive, removed a lot of invasive plants, and this is all in preparation for planting of native grasses and trees later in the fall, sort of part of the township's commitment to upgrading our waterways along Darby Creek and Cobb's Creek. So those, those plantings will probably be occurring sometime in October, November. And apologies for not getting out to the residents to tell them about the Gogga Pit, but thank you to the Eagle Scouts and scouts who are also out there on a rainy Sunday who put this together, and I think it's going to be a, you know, big plus for the neighborhood. I'm also looking forward to the new basketball courts, and perhaps that's where Commissioner Trombetta and I can have our basketball challenge. You can have a home court at Padarka, and I'll have the Grange. That's all I have, and let's aim for 10:15 at the latest.
I haven't gone yet. Commissioner Waxler.
Big fest. I just want to offer my congratulations to the new police officers. I'm happy that they're going to hit the street right away because they're experienced. They just probably need to learn some street names, and then you'll have productive employees, which is, they look very professional as all our police officers. I'd also like to thank our Public Works Department. It's been extremely hot and humid. There's some unsung heroes. We always talk about our police and firemen locally, but you guys would be complaining to all of us if your trash was on the street and not being picked up. And in this environment, they have worked this summer very hard. So I offer congratulations to them and our thanks. And I also want to praise Hadda. Peggy has been dedicated and tenacious in getting that group off there, and it's been, I can tell you, at least one house on every block in an area that has some form of addiction that they have to overcome. And that's been a great aid for many residents in my neighborhood that I know of that have been recommended there, and the help that they provide is just excellent. And then, as the chief said, being a volunteer fireman, 9/11 is very near and dear to most firemen. 343 FDNY members lost their lives that day, but it didn't just stop there. Their families were affected, you know, for the rest of their lives. The number of kids, the number of kids that have become firemen was highlighted in 60 Minutes stories in there. But the sad part, it still goes on. We can't forget because as of the last reading I remember, 343 died that day? There's another, at least three, the last count I saw officially, and then, you know, you look at the internet, at least 341, 41 additional members have died since then because of cancer-related illnesses related to their work there, pulmonary illnesses, and that list is going to grow. And if it hasn't surpassed the 343, it will in the near future, which is sad. So it's something we say we will not forget, but there's a lot of families are there, and I'm sure the chief as a fireman knows, you couldn't do this job, especially as a fireman or professional fireman, without your families, and they mean everything, and everybody wants to go home. It's just like our police officers. At the end of the day, you go on a call, the biggest thing we can ask for is that everybody get to go home that day. And that day, now that somebody did, a lot, 343 firemen didn't, as well as many police officers, but other people are still losing their lives early because of that same terrorist attack that still affects them. So, so just please keep them in your mind in your prayers for the rest of them. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Waxler. Commissioner Trombetta.
Mr. President, it's a tough act to follow. First, I'd like to remind the public that the deadline to apply for the Women and Minority Business Enterprise Economic Development Grant is this Friday, September 15th at 4:00 PM. As a reminder, this is a competitive grant program that will make 10 awards of $10,000 to promote economic growth and development of Haverford Township businesses meeting the classification of a woman or minority business enterprise. If you're interested in learning more, please visit the township website. And just for the sake of brevity, I just, one more comment, just to say that as the high holy days approach, I want to extend my warmest wishes to the Jewish community and Haverford Township and beyond. May Rosh Hashanah usher in a year filled with sweetness and hope, and may your days of reflection during Yom Kippur be meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Trombetta. I will finish with a quote from Barack Obama. "Even the smallest act of service, the simplest act of kindness, the way to honor those we lost, a way to reclaim that spirit of unity that followed 9/11." With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Adjourned.